Good evening, everyone. My name is Anne Savage and I am the President of the City School District of Albany Board of Education. On behalf of the Board, I welcome you to our meeting. If I sound a little different, or you sense that we're having any sort of technical difficulties, that is because we are trying out a new style of microphone today. So we'll see how this goes. It should make everyone's lives easier and be less work for all, so we'll see if it works. I am joined tonight in person by Board Member Hassan Al-Menyawi, Board Member Damaris Mann, Secretary to the Board Shredar Chitter, Board Member Ellen Creche, Vice President of the Board Vicki Smith. Unfortunately, Ms. Wilson is unable to be with us today, and of course, we have Ms. Bowie, Board Clerk here, as well as Superintendent Adams present in the meeting. The meeting is being livestreamed. The instructions to view this meeting and all meetings are available at albanyschools.org/boe. We will show the relevant slides and documents in the virtual meeting screen, as well as on the screens here in this room. You can also access the slides via albanyschools.org/boe if you prefer to be able to control the slides yourself. Those of you joining us in person tonight know that we are taking precautions consistent with those required for schools by the New York State Department of Health and the CDC, which still require masks and three feet separation between adults in a school setting. We always do select this large room for our meetings to allow as many people to attend as possible, and we do have an overflow room we can use if necessary. With that introduction, we invite those of you who choose to join us as we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. In addition to saying the Pledge of Allegiance, we always focus our meeting by restating the mission of the City School District of Albany, which is to work in partnership with our diverse community to engage every learner in a robust educational program designed to provide the knowledge and skills necessary for success. Superintendent Adams, do you have a report for us?
I do. Good evening, and thank you, Madam President and members of the Board. This week marks American Education Week. The annual recognition, this annual recognition is dedicated solely to all of the administrators, faculty, and support staff who work tirelessly every day of the year to serve the students and families of our community. Public school districts like ours are the backbone of every community. We welcome students of all backgrounds, abilities, and incomes. Each of our employees plays an important role in supporting the success of all of our students academically, socially, and emotionally. Our role in our community is critical, and more critical now than ever, as we work together to keep student learning on track during this pandemic. I want to thank every member of our organization, including our dedicated Board of Education members, for your dedication to the success of our students and children. I recognize the work that you do and truly appreciate all of your efforts to make a difference in the lives of our students. Together, we are building a brighter, stronger future for our city and our community, as we are all in for Albany. Tuesday of this week also marked School-Related Professionals Day in New York. This provided an opportunity to recognize the members of APSU, our management confidential staff, and our partners at First Student and CDTA for all that they do to ensure success of our students. Educational support professionals include: teaching assistants, teacher aides, homeschool coordinators, information technology support workers, administrative assistants, secretaries, clerks, maintenance staff, food service workers, security staff, bus drivers, and bus aides. We also look at our support staff colleagues, as they are there every day, and we often, and often, they are the first individuals to welcome our students to school in the morning, and the last to see them off in the afternoon or evening. We are so very grateful for all that they do. Their work is valued, and we simply could not function without them. We also had the opportunity to celebrate two additional recognition events this week. November is Native American Heritage Month. It is a time to celebrate and explore the rich cultures, traditions, histories, achievements, and challenges of the original inhabitants of the lands that now make up the United States of America. This week also marked the first White House Tribal Nations Summit. This two-day event brought government officials and leaders from federally recognized tribes together to discuss ways our nation can invest in and support Native American progress. While this is, while this work is important and is being done on a national level, as a district, we also prioritize the contributions of Native people with the curricula and recognize their deep historic, historical contributions locally in the, in New York and across the country and across the world. This week also marks Transgender Awareness Week, a time to increase visibility about transgender people and address the issues members of that community may face. The City School District of Albany supports transgender students and employees throughout this organization. We ask families, caregivers, and community members to be allies as well. Please join us in advancing transgender advocacy by working to eliminate the prejudice, discrimination, and violence that affects the transgender community. According to the Gay and Lesbian Alliance Against Defamation, 2021 marks the most deadly year recorded for transgender Americans. There have been at least 45 individuals killed nationwide, most of them African-American or Latinx. That is why it is very important that we take the time this Saturday to honor Transgender Day of Remembrance, which commemorates all transgender people lost to violence. In our community, the First Unitarian Universalist Society is holding a memorial service Saturday at 6:00 p.m. It will be followed by candlelight vigil at Townsend Park at 7:00 p.m. Albany High School had the opportunity last week to celebrate academic achievements of 101 newest members of our National Honor Society Arista chapter. Each of those seniors has maintained an academic average of 89.5 or higher throughout their high school careers. This is an exceptional accomplishment. I am honored to congratulate each new National Honor Society member and their families. Well done. Speaking of exceptional high school students, Section Two diving champion Anna Flanders will be going for a state championship this weekend in Ithaca. The state swimming and diving meet takes place Friday and Saturday on the campus of Ithaca College. Anna will be, will be competing tomorrow afternoon, and we wish her the very best of luck. A reminder for our families that parent-teacher conferences are coming up next Wednesday. There will be no school for students that day to provide our parents and guardians the opportunity to connect with their teachers. If you do not already have an appointment for a parent-teacher conference, please reach out to your school to schedule one. These meetings are critical pieces in our homeschool relationship that supports our students' academic and personal success. I also would like to remind everyone that our school offices will be closed next week on Thursday and Friday for the Thanksgiving break. Please be safe if you are traveling for the holiday, and enjoy the comfort and good company of family and friends. It is now my pleasure to introduce Principal Michael Folino to share great information about William S. Hackett Middle School.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you again for allowing me to be here. It is a little weird. I can't, I can't tell you not being so locked into the school, but it's always a pleasure to see the Board and to give a few minutes of what all the great things are that are going on at Hackett Middle School. We want to start with our guiding principles, as we normally do. Our mission at Hackett Middle School is we celebrate the strength of our diversity and foster a learning community based upon mutual respect and supportive relationships to achieve our full potential as leaders, learners, and citizens. Anyone that has had the opportunity to come to Hackett knows that we have a very strong commitment to our PBIS program, since we have our own PBIS mission statement, which is to implement a proactive school-wide discipline plan to foster a positive learning environment that promotes common expectations, accountability, and models rigorous academic achievement and behavioral expectations. When we put our two mission statements together, both our school and our PBIS mission statement, we come up with our goals for this year. Obviously, our goal for this year is to provide a safe and nurturing environment for all students as they return to in-person learning. We want to continue to implement culturally responsive practices so that we establish a positive school climate, and we continue to set high academic standards for all of our students, and we continue to search to utilize all of our human resources and student support committees to ensure that the social, emotional, and academic needs of all students and our families are being met. At Hackett, I think this is really important, and it helps to distinguish who we are. We have a set of building blocks that we ask all faculty and staff to continue, and I always like to, to present them at tonight's meeting so you have an understanding of like our non-negotiables. One of our first non-negotiables is we dot all the i's and cross all the t's. We leave nothing uncovered. It's a theory in the building that if you're going to lead, go ahead and lead regardless of what your title or position may be. Everybody needs to be a champion for all students. We remind our students all day long, I know this is the one that probably drives them the craziest, but if no one's told you today that you are loved, then we will be the first. And at Hackett Middle School, we use the word "family." Anybody who's been in the building knows that. We will storm and form like a family, but at the end of the day, we are there for each other, we're there for our students, and most importantly, there for our family. Ms. Bowie, we can go to the next one. This is just me trying to get a little creative with our presentation this year. I put this slide up today because I think this is important for everybody to see and know, and it's one that I'm really excited about. As most people probably know, we had the opportunity to add the second sixth-grade team to Hackett Middle School, to bring all the sixth graders up, and just wanted to put a slide so the Board could see it tonight. Last year, whether the students were in virtual or on-site, we had a total of 654 students, 156 sixth graders, 234 seventh graders, and 264 eighth graders. This year presently, we have 711 students operating in the building every day, and you can see that the biggest difference is that sixth grade increased from 156 students to 233. Seventh grade kind of remained the same with 244 students, and Grade Eight kind of slightly decreased to 234. And again, that's being driven by the fact that we added the second grade, a second sixth grade team, which is really exciting to us, and I appreciate the Board's support for that. One of the things that is interesting with all the changes that we've had, there are 27 new faculty members in the building who have never been in Hackett Middle School before. So we roughly have about 75 faculty members, an additional 25 non-instructional members, so about 100 faculty and staff members altogether, 27 new folks who have never been in our building before. So we are trying to acclimate them as quickly as we can, and then to make that second sixth grade team work, we had the addition of eight new teachers hired to support the sixth grade team. So that's probably one of the biggest changes you'll see in Hackett Middle School if you ever want to come over and visit us. So our set focus, I put this in two spots today. Obviously, we're going to continue to focus on math and ELA. We're also going to focus on our chronic absenteeism and our student discipline. But a couple of highlights for math and ELA, our curriculum development teams continuing to look at our curricular changes recommended by the district review teams to make sure that we are focusing on equity, diversity, representation, student voice, and social justice themes. The building administrators work collaboratively with our instructional supervisors at this point in time on a weekly basis, conducting walkthroughs with our teachers and providing feedback, and that is something I think has a major impact on what we see our changes are in our building and our academics. And then lastly, our literacy coach and our math coaches continue to facilitate grade level, grade level data cycles. We are definitely a data-driven school at Hackett Middle School. They align those data cycles with their curricular goals, all for the purposes of trying to identify where our students can improve and make sure we're on, we're meeting our grade-level standards. In terms of our focus on attendance and student discipline, we continue to have monthly attendance meetings with each grade-level team to make sure that we can identify our students that we feel are chronically absent, meet with those families, and try to incorporate interventions to improve attendance. Our homeschool coordinators, when available, based upon what's going on in the community, are making home visits to our parents and our family members. One of the things that I really look forward to, it happens every Friday, is our student support team meetings. Those are meetings with administrators, guidance counselors, full-service social workers, school resource officer, homeschool coordinator, and that's where we do a lot of work from our grade-level team meetings to identify the students that are struggling academically or behaviorally, and again, trying to offer interventions to help them before we bring them to our MTSS committee. As I mentioned, our PBIS committee is very active. We have a PBIS store at Hackett Middle School, and something that's new this year is they're having their monthly Students of the Month PBI recognition. Students the first month got a Hackett water bottle full with some Starburst candies. Don't know if that fits the wellness policy, but we'll let that one go for a little while. But we are working hard to recognize our students and bring them back, and we restored our behavior specialist position for this year. Ms. Yeomans has been an outstanding addition in helping us to put our support plans together to address the needs of our students. What are our challenges? This was my slide that I probably had the most difficulty putting together today because the challenges have been a lot. Mask-wearing, to a degree, it's really not that bad in our building, but obviously, the kids not really being comfortable with it. The biggest one, and one I take a lot of pride with our faculty and staff, is just getting kids re-acclimated and coming back in the building. I'm sure you guys have heard from other presentations, it's been a challenge for kids. A lot of kids have had a lot of anxiety coming back, so we are slowly taking our time to bring the kids back to school. Lunch schedule has been a little bit of an issue based upon how the kids have to sit at a distance apart. We had to get a little creative with our lunch schedule, and so we have one, one class per week that eats in their, in their homeroom, and then we kind of rotate it through so that way the kids are sitting appropriately in the cafeteria. I put meeting times up there. Like I said, it's great to see you guys tonight. Getting tired of doing the virtual meetings for every subcommittee meeting, every team meeting, just kind of want to get back into the process of being face-to-face. I think we have more detailed conversations when we're in the presence of each other. Want to thank Mr. Petron, he's in the back, but we're still trying to hire some staff as we speak right now at Hackett. Still looking for an E&amp;L teacher. We're in the process of hiring a band teacher. One of our band teachers got a promotion outside the district, still hiring a couple of TAs, and so staff hiring has continued longer in the school year than we've normally expected. Student attendance is a tough one. We still have some families out there who think there's a virtual option, and trying to convince them that, that there's not, and then bring them in. And then again, one of the challenges, the addition of the second grade team. Anybody who's ever had their kids come through our building knows that sixth grade used to be, used to be my, my babies up on the third floor, and they were easy, but now we've added 77 more babies, and they are having fun up there, and so it's been a little bit of a challenge to get them acclimated, but we know that once that happens in sixth grade, where seventh grade used to be our trouble area, we know next year they're going to be more acclimated, so we're just kind of dealing with it right now. So how will we address some of those challenges? As I said, we do a lot of reinforcement with PBIS in the classroom, a lot of PBIS re-teachers, a lot of no-referral celebration parties. We've done PBIS to help with the bus concerns that we've had, so PBIS has played a major factor. Thanks to the district, we have our dividers in place to help try to reduce contact with the kids. As I said, we modified our lunch schedule on a rotating basis so that we're not overcrowding our cafeteria. Become really good at virtual scheduling of meetings. Never thought I could have so many virtual PTA meetings as we've had in the past, but it's good, and the nice part is, is at Hackett anyways, we have a lot of parents who participate in the virtual PTA meetings. We really haven't dropped off, and as I say to you right now, we are continuing to interview for teachers. Mr. Petron and I were talking in the back, we don't see each other too often during the day for those positions, but we hope to have them all filled by the time we get to Christmas. What are our successes? The left side has been the same. Thanks to the support of the Board and Ms. McKenna and the Superintendent, our Tier Two and our Tier Three academic services and interventions are what I think move Hackett the furthest. Our ability to provide the students with the supports they need academically has been tremendous, and so I thank everyone for that. I mentioned PBIS. Our data team meetings, knowing where we have gaps, trying to identify where the gaps are, continues to be a success. And again, anybody who's ever come to Hackett knows that we use the word "family" a lot. It is truly a family culture, the kids embody that, and so we're really, I'm really blessed to be the principal. This is new, and it has a little bit to do with the number of kids. In my 12 years, and yes, it's been 12 years of being the principal at Hackett Middle School, we have 352 kids who made honor roll for the first semester. That is the highest number I have ever had in 12 years of being at Hackett. Just to put it in perspective, back 12 years ago, that number was 181 kids, and so we have almost doubled that in that time, which really even more impressive, 133 kids in the building this year with a 94.5 or higher overall average, 123 with a 90 or higher average, and then 96 that have the 84, the minimum 84, 289. And again, for those of you who have been with me, and Anne, you've been with me for a long time, not to put us out there, you know what it took to get us to become a school in good standing. Always proud to admit that Hackett is a school in good standing after all those lean receivership and precisionally struggling school years, so I always want to make sure that Hackett is a school in good standing, so we're really proud of that. I think that's like the fourth or fifth year now in a row, so that's a testament to the work of our teachers and our students, so we're really proud of that. The one thing that I'm really, really proud of, and we'll show you a quick video, is we created, and I can't take any credit for this, I have to give credit to Ms. Howard and Ms. Greenway, as we have been rolling out our equity work throughout the district. These two ladies took it upon themselves to create a student equity team, and we had a book study meeting today amongst administrators, and finding out that a lot of schools now have a student equity team. This is an opportunity in our building for our young people to have a voice, and oh, do they have a voice, and it's been outstanding. It has made a tremendous change in our building. It's almost kind of like our student government team to a whole nother level, so we're really proud of it. And the one thing I wanted to show real quick, I think it's like a 3-2 second video, is one of our students on the team describing what he feels equity means.
I think equity is to give every person from a different race and different cultures the same chance that other people get, because certain races get more job opportunities and get more help than other races, and I feel like equity means to give everybody equal opportunities.
As we've learned at, at Hackett, our students might know more than we do on that topic, and we are learning from them every day, and so to me, the biggest success in our building has been our equity team. The last slide I think I have here tonight is just, we are trying to return to normal, and it's been great to be back. It was a little scary in late August and September. We, we had a spirit week, which is one of the things that we look forward to, different themes throughout the day, whether it was Twin Day, Costume Day, School Color Day, but we are getting back to normal. I'm really proud of my faculty, my staff, and my students. The first two months were difficult, they were challenging, but even though we're in remote learning right now for the next couple of days, we would rather be in school, and so we continue to push for that, and thank you for your support. And I think with that, I have just the last slide of any questions. If there's no questions or any questions, I'll take them.
There are always questions. We reserve this time for the rest of the business meetings, so unfortunately, we don't have time for questions tonight, but we really appreciate you being here and celebrating with your tremendous success that you've had over the last several years. Thank you.
Thank you guys for having me. It's always good seeing you. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Folino.
I think at this time, we'll move forward with our district update, and I will have several cabinet members assist as we move through this presentation. As always, we start with our vision, mission, and goals to make sure that we keep that at the forefront of our conversations so that we know that these are the items that we hold near and dear as we look to increase student achievement, enhance the delivery of quality instruction, build our leadership capacity, empower our families, and partner with our diverse community. Tonight, our discussion topics are safety and security, the child safety zone update, feeder alignment committee update, COVID-19, human resources, maintenance and operations, instructional update, and early childhood update. I will say that the update for human resources will be at a very high level because we do have that in-depth presentation about the division from Mr. Petron a little bit later tonight. So the first area is safety and security, and I wanted to address the fact that Albany High School, we have mobilized the crisis support team and implemented heightened security measures Thursday in response to the, the violence in the community after school on Wednesday, and even today, there was a situation that impacted four of our schools, where we have been working with our pupil personnel services to provide information for our teachers to share with our students, also looking at our social-emotional supports, and we'll talk about that a little bit later as well with what we're doing there, and reminding our students that they see something to say something. We did look at a staggered dismissal this afternoon. One of the things that we do note that in a staggered dismissal, it does assist us with the building in and of itself, but one of the things that we do have to be very mindful of is that as students are exiting the building, even in a staggered fashion, that they are still congregating in certain areas. We are all, one of the other pieces that I know that we are working on, we're looking at transportation, and that means coordinating with CDTA to get additional buses to help pick up more of our students that are congregated at different stops, and then we will see how that goes. We've also heightened the presence of APD, and so we are also looking at what are those other things that we can do in partnership with APD? We have some community groups that are looking to mobilize and assist us with supervision, as well as our own staff looking at supervision. And so when I say looking at supervision, that means actually boots on the ground, engaging in students. I think one of the other things that's going to help is that we have finally received all of our uniforms for our security staff, and so they are easily identifiable. As the weather gets a little cooler, they do have the reflective jackets that they can wear so that you can easily identify who they are. And then we have also looked at precautionary lockouts that happened today at Ash, Delaware, Hackett, and Toast, and that is, that is due to a police investigation on Delaware Avenue, as well as the incident yesterday after school is also an open investigation, and so we are working with the APD to assist in any way that we can. And so we do maintain close contacts with city officials, law enforcement, and again, engaging all the supports that we can with regard to some of the situations that we have been seeing. At this time, Ms. McKenna, I don't know if there's anything to add, but I will see if there's anything that you would like to add.
No, I think you did a great job covering.
Okay, thank you very much. And again, when we open it up for questions, there may be some questions that Ms. McKenna can answer. We do have a moment of celebration. We are excited about the child safety zone update. Governor Hochul did sign the child safety zone legislation, and we know that that has been something that our district has been working on for a very long time with regard to expanding the criteria for child safety zones. Currently, we have one, and we are looking at other areas that we can expand. We do want to thank Assembly Member Pat Fahey and Senator Robert Jackson for sponsoring and advocating for this important legislation. And we want to make sure that we are doing everything we can to have our students in school in person each and every day, and we know that actually when the weather is, students are not in school, and that expanding the school safety will not only help students, but it will help us throughout the entire school year. We are looking at areas that have density and vacant buildings, as well as our crime stats, and how that can assist us with having transportation for our students less than the 1.5 miles which is currently allotted, and so we want to make sure that we have those things in place. And so the next step is we are now advocating for the appropriate updates to the SED regulations, and with that new criteria, we will also be advocating for industrial and commercial properties to be included in the actual SED regulation. We have been working with our feeder alignment committee, and this committee has had very robust conversation, and it is just, it's really good to see our, our parents becoming very involved with regard to the committee, and the primary goal is looking at equitable enrollment for all three of our middle schools. The criteria that we have been looking at, academic profiles, the total enrollment, making sure that we're balancing out those numbers so that one school does not have a, a number of students that is significantly higher or significantly lower than the others. We look to try and balance that enrollment. higher or significantly lower than the others. We look to try and balance that enrollment. We're looking at the special programs that are there. We're also looking at a transportation component. What does that look like? And so the committee members are hard at work. And we are also looking at, we had more than 30 potential scenarios. They've narrowed it down to about five scenarios. We're looking at the pros and the cons, and what are some of the different pieces of those final five, if you will. And the committee will meet again at, well, right before Thanksgiving, we'll meet again. And we should be ready to bring some information forward to the board. Next steps, looking at a community survey to gain additional input. Final committee meeting, I would say, not necessarily final, but one of the last few committee meetings on November 23. Looking at a board presentation on the 2nd of December and December 16. Any additional opportunities for community feedback and input would then be scheduled. And then we are anticipating a board decision in early 2022. So that's our high-level plan. And then, of course, if we need to adjust some of those dates, we will. COVID-19 is still alive and well. And we are really feeling some of the inconveniences, as well as some of the challenges of quarantining and trying to keep our doors open and keep our students in school. As you can see, we have 277 total confirmed cases that have been reported. We are averaging for the month of November, we're looking at a 3.6 daily average, as opposed to a 5.1 daily average for October. We still ask that our families be prepared with backup plans, because in the event that there's a need to transition to distance learning, we need to make sure that we have those backup plans in place. We are seeing a lot of higher numbers right now. And it is very concerning. And so we are really encouraging our families to please, please be very mindful of all the COVID protocols. We are doing the same in the district. So it's just, we just need to stay vigilant, because we are seeing that we're having to go to distance learning more than what we would like to because of the infection rates. We do have testing for our employees and our students. You see the information here. We are at 60% of proof of vaccination received. We have 39.8% of no proof of vaccination at this time. We do have daily testing available for our employees, and this is regardless of vaccination status. Pre-registration and an appointment are absolutely required. So we have those links available for our staff. And then COVID testing for students, parents and guardians need to pre-register. And then we have to have consent for the parent to give permission for the child to test. And we have the links available. Ms. McKenna, I didn't know if you wanted to add something here from PPS or anything?
Sure, I can add a few more details to that. So thank you. We are in the process of working with our vendor to bring in additional support for student and staff testing. They have identified five out of the nine CNAs for fingerprinting clearance. And so we'll be bringing them in shortly to begin the testing program within our buildings. We have interviewed two, what we are calling COVID-19 support specialists, for helping families navigate the clarify registration process, contact tracing, and just general COVID-19 support throughout the district and for our nurses. We've also created, until these testing teams are up and running, a drive-through test center with hours at the beginning, the middle, and the end of the day. And we have identified, excuse me, designated parking spot where the person will text a member of the PPS team, the testing team, and they will come out and they will do the testing outside. Let's see what else. We also have a testing clinic tomorrow and Monday for Hackett students from 8:30 to 12:30. And at both of, at the Harriet Gibbons Center, we are also offering a combination of the PCR test and the rapid antigen test as needed. So we do have both tests available. And it will be at the discretion of Suzanne McCarthy, on which test, if one or the other, if not both, are provided. And so I just want to give a big shout out to Dr. Kanzoni Ball, Suzanne McCarthy, and Dr. Staffer, all the work that they have done to make sure that we are in compliance with all of our COVID-19 protocols and systems. So, thank you.
For our vaccine information, we are urging everyone five and older who's eligible. We encourage parents to get their children vaccinated. We have identified several sites, Crossgate Mall as one of 10 mass vaccination sites. We are also partnering with Albany County Health Department and Whitney Young to schedule school-based vaccination clinics for our students. And there will be more information forthcoming about that, as well as DOH sites for immunization clinics. We also have that available. With regards to HR, our HR update, we started with 431 positions available. We have filled 238 to date. The remaining positions are vacant at this time. As you know, that we have a focus on social and emotional support. And so if you look at the chart that is on the right, looking at where we were in 2019 and where we are now, you can see where we are in terms of those positions for social emotional support. We do have nine vacancies. And all of those positions will be represented in those nine vacancies. We have four candidates identified, and we're still recruiting for five more. That is where we are in terms of, I want to tie it right back to when we look at some of the discipline issues that we have, and some of the things that we're seeing with regard to challenges in our community with our families, that these positions are critical to provide support, not only for the students when they are at school, but also support to our families with connecting them to the appropriate resources that they may need. In our maintenance and operations department, we are going to, we did welcome Mr. Kiefer at the last board meeting, but he officially begins on Monday. And we are excited to have that position filled. Tonight, during the routine consent, we have another position that we are hoping that the board would approve during routine consent, our assistant director. We did have a submission for that particular position. We are still looking at ways in which to enhance the deep cleaning and disinfecting of our schools, depending on evening shifts, as well as giving priority to those buildings that have to switch to distance learning based on COVID-19 positive cases. Our instructional update tonight, again, can't highlight enough, supporting the social and emotional mental health of our students, and making sure that they are connected with the appropriate resources. You heard last time from Assistant Superintendent Dr. Wilson Turner, as well as Ms. McKenna, things that we are seeing in classrooms, and how we are looking at instruction, and descriptively what we're seeing. And again, once we do their update, more concrete information for our, for the instructional piece. At this time, I would like to invite Dr. Wilson Turner to share information about our early childhood program.
Thank you, Mrs. Adams. Good evening, Board of Education. It's my pleasure to provide a brief update on the early childhood department. You have a full report from our illustrious Director, Ms. Melissa Hasty, in an SVU, with the traditional level of detail that she is accustomed to providing you about our programming efforts to date. So a few highlights, we thought it was important to speak about our enrollment and the shifts we've seen in that since just before COVID. We have currently 184 seats and 57 classroom spaces, with a majority of four-year-old classrooms, 17 three-year-old classrooms, and four multi-age classrooms, where we have both three and four-year-olds. However, we have reduced seats by 290 students since 2018-19 school year, which was originally over 1,000 capacity. In terms of staffing, we continue to have six district staff classrooms, two associated with the dual-language program, four associated with the Montessori Magnet School. However, we always clarify, the reason there are four there is because of the multi-age classroom split, with also kindergarten. We have 51 remaining CBO-staffed classrooms, which means our community-based organizations provide staff for both our off-site and onsite pre-K programs. And we continue to experience about a 39% teacher turnover rate, which is consistent with the last three years. And we've discussed in the past, the reasons for that being that we do a really good job working with our pre-K educators, and they go on to take other certified teaching positions at the elementary level. Social emotional learning, just like everywhere else in the district, continues to be a focus in the early childhood department. It has always been one of the primary purposes of having our students come through a preschool program, so that they are adequately adjusted to school and supported in the skills necessary to be strong learners. We have noticed that there has been an impact in the over the last year and a half with this area, but specifically in the language development of students as they're entering pre-K, struggles with self-regulation and developing self-help skills. And true to form, the early childhood department has reviewed that data and done observations and seen on the ground the adjustments that have been needed to be made, to schedules and unit calendars to ensure that they're being responsive to the needs that students are demonstrating, knowing that if they take care of those primary needs, that they'll be able to bring the students further, and all the other skills as we go through the year. Ms. Hasty is most proud of the equity work this department has engaged over in the last year and a half, in developing a goal statement amongst her team. So remember, her team is consisted of her early childhood assistant coordinator, and they work underneath her to go into all the other CBO locations. And as a result, she's not just trying to infuse the equity lens into the work of our building pre-K. She's trying to infuse the equity work into all of these community-based organizations through a very intentional approach, and a goal statement that's used with those directors, but also by embedding it intentionally in the curriculum. We had lengthy conversations about the importance of increasing opportunities for the students to see themselves and people like them regularly, and anchor texts in the curriculum as they move throughout the year, just not limited to designated months that we highlight those particular groups of people. And student voice, I think, has always been important in the pre-K classroom, as they focus on children developing their voice and learning how to make good decisions and choice. And so they continue to emphasize that in the work. Per pupil allocation, or PPA, is looking to be increased, was increased this year by $200 by how we were able to navigate the budget and how many seats that we were able to offer. However, Ms. Hasty came, I believe it was last year or the year before, and we've been discussing the need to bring our pre-K teacher salaries to be a more competitive, so that we're able to impact that turnover rate. And we've also talked at length about how we're funded for our pre-K seats, and how we continue to have legislative efforts around getting to a more competitive per pupil allocation for our students with new grant funding that comes along. And so in the absence of new grant funding, we would, we still look to increase our per pupil allocation by $420 across our programs. But there are grant opportunities as they continue to introduce new pre-K opportunities for full-day pre-K programming that we will continue to apply for, now that we have seats available that we can begin to recruit for.
This concludes the district update, and we will open it up for questions.
And as we move into questions, I know we are experimenting with our new mics. I do encourage people to keep them quite close to your mask if you can. I think that will help. As we always do, I am going to take us back to the beginning of the presentation, and we'll go slide by slide, so that we can be extremely thoughtful about grouping our questions together. I do ask that you think hard about your questions, and make sure you have a full question prepared in your mind before you start to speak, so that we can try and be efficient about that, and that you ask your most important question first. So I know that this first slide is about safety and security, which has been a very difficult period for the district, especially the last couple of days, but even before that. And I know it's a part of our jobs that makes, that's very difficult for all of us, as we really empathize with the families who are impacted by safety and security in this very serious way. So, board colleagues, who has a comment, question, thought on safety and security based on this information provided?
Thank you, Kiefer. Really just a comment. I think that we are all very concerned about what's happening in our community, in our society, across the country. But certainly right here at home, it's very disturbing to have the kinds of things go on in our communities that are occurring. And that, of course, spills over into our schools. So I am just wanting to reiterate and keep encouraging, as we are doing, the collaborative work across the city with community organizations, city officials, families, just neighborhoods. It's got to be an all-in thing. It's affecting every single person. And so the solution seems to me is going to call upon collaborative effort. So just that comment. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I don't know if you can see my hand, but I have something, just in case. Thank you so much. I'm sorry. So yes, I appreciate so much that you explained so many of the dynamics that come across, I think, from our public, who have thoughts. Naturally, we're brainstorming as a community. So thank you so much for elaborating on the staggered dismissal and all the different aspects that have to be in consideration. And as far as, I would say also, just, it's not a question, but a comment in terms of that now in this season, when I think we are looking at infrastructure, communities, infrastructure as well, and that we can really identify maybe what the needs are beyond the school district, which we do have our charge, of course, to educate students. But we do, of course, spill over into so many social issues, of course, and rise to that. But I think it's also, as Vicky indicated, a collaborative effort with the community. And so now that we have the rapt attention of so many individuals and various federal funding coming in, it'll be great to investigate what we need and what supports we can put in structurally across the board as a city, as a whole, and not just from the dynamic of the school district.
I guess I just want to add that I wish I had the magic wand to make this all go away. I recognize that there's limits to what the district can do, limits to what the city can do, limits to what the community can do. But nonetheless, it's not right that this is what's happening in our community and to our families, adults as well. There's many more impacted adults in the gun violence in our community than there are, than there have been children. And families of all kinds have been deeply impacted by this. And I know that we are doing many things, experimenting with the things that are within our control, to try and figure out how to resolve this, or to how we can contribute. But I also know it's not enough. And I know it's right for community members to say, this is unacceptable. We can't go on like this. That is absolutely true, and I feel and hear that. And I know that I have great faith in the administration of Albany High and of the district that you're stretching, seeking the boundaries of what we can do. So, you know, I encourage you to continue to reach for solutions to this, as far as we can. You have to do something as a community, as Vicky has said so well, working together. And I appreciate, in particular, with law enforcement and CDT, to try and adjust some of their aspects in those afternoon hours, because I think that that is what's going to be needed. We don't have enough staff to be able to supervise our students far beyond the range of our school. I wish we did. And even if we did, I don't know that we have, we don't have the legal authority or the appropriate training to be doing that work out far from school. But do I wish that I could manufacture enough people to put, you know, three or four highly skilled, highly trained adults on every corner from Albany High out in a five-block radius? Well, yes, I do. I wish I could do that. And I don't know without that how we go from here. So, Superintendent, I offer you the opportunity to speak to that. If you'd like to speak some more, I know you were very clear before, but if you'd like another opportunity, there it is.
I just think that one of the things that we have to just be very cognizant about is some of the interactions that we're seeing with our students. And I always have to look at it from an instructor. And I always have to look at it from an instructional standpoint, because for me, everything is instructional. And so when we look at it from an instructional standpoint, and I've said it before, I'll say it again, we're talking about problem-solving skills, we're talking about conflict resolution skills. And those are skills that we see a desperate need for. The way in which we go about resolving conflicts is extremely important, what we model for our students, how we educate our students. The reason that our curriculum is rich with so many conflicts is talking about those conflict resolution strategies and skills and higher-level thinking skills that help us develop individuals who think through and learn how to resolve issues. And so at the core of it, we're talking about problem-solving skills and conflict resolution. And so as we focus on those things along with social, emotional well-being, there are so many things that come into play with that conflict resolution. And there are things, many times, that are beyond the school walls, which by no means absolves the school from addressing those needs. It's just understanding that we have to go about things differently, and it may take a minute, but that minute, in that minute of time, is where we have to work with those wraparound services for our students. Again, are there consequences for inappropriate behaviors? Absolutely, there are consequences. You can see that in the reports that we provide to you with regard to from in-house suspension to detention to, it could be a conference with the child, a conference with the family, there are a number of consequences that happen. The consequences alone are not going to solve the issue, and I can't emphasize that enough. Because even though we may have consequences, we still then need, and I think this is one of the reasons for being able to highlight the counselors, the school psychologists, social workers, et cetera, is because if a child goes out, for example, on a suspension, then what's happening while the child is on the suspension, as well as what is that reentry plan when they come back? And so looking at that, we are addressing the needs of the whole child, but there are so many needs that we have to look at. And again, I will say that it is not just that social, emotional group of professionals. We look at our hall monitors, who see kids every single day. We look at our homeschool coordinators, who work with families and help bridge that gap between home and school. And so to know that we do have a lot of collective resources that we use in-house, but also that expansion to our community and looking at, and it's not always about law enforcement, it's not always about that, but we do rely and partner with law enforcement. And I think the last piece that I want to say is that we have community groups that want to assist, and what I call they stand in the gap. They stand in the gap from where the school jurisdiction is limited. They stand in that gap before our students have that opportunity to become justice-involved, because we don't want that for our students either. And so helping us have those community members and the support to help stand in the gap, that's also another resource for the wraparound services that we provide for our students and families. And so I think that's one of the things that we have to make sure that we completely understand that it is, it is a whole network of all of us working together to help our students be successful, to help them make appropriate choices, yes, to have consequences, but also to be there to help support them.
Anyone else on this topic?
You know, we all grew up in a world where it was all about community, right? I mean, I could be, you know, when I was growing up, I had to be careful where I, whatever I did, because even before I got home, the news of what I did had already gotten home. That's how community was. And if, you know, if there's nothing else that what COVID has taught us, it should be that you can't isolate yourself and say, it's those people, these kids. If we are all connected, if you ignore it, it's going to come and get you at some point in time, right? So we all need to be in it together and try to partner whichever way we can, because there are limitations to what anybody, any one person can do. But together, there might be some solutions. And this is, this is a serious problem. This is not a problem that is laid for justice calls, it's, you know, it's a city's problem, right? When I mean the city's problem, it's a community problem. And we need all entities to come together and try tackling it from different ways. But it's not just law enforcement, it's social, emotional. These kids have been going through, the last 18 months have not been easy on anybody. And these are young youth who have faced the same issues that we've been exposed to. We hopefully have a little bit more tolerance and we've, you know, been able to deal with it better. But, you know, so I just want to make sure that, you know, we understand this is not any one person's problem, it's everybody's problem, and we need to work, and only we need to solve it, we need all of us to come together.
Board member Creji.
Something the superintendent said wanted me, made me want to point out something, which is, of course, we have really worked hard on equitable discipline and getting rid of disproportionate discipline and making sure we're really thoughtful and appropriate in the discipline that we do issue to students who are disruptive or violent in the school environment. And of course, the most severe consequence that we can issue, short of getting law enforcement involved, is a suspension from the building. And so, of course, during a suspension from the building, we simply cannot control what this child who's been excluded from the building because of his or her behavior is doing. That's kind of the paradox, and it just points out why we need the whole community. We need families, and we need families, law enforcement, community agencies, and just everybody, neighborhoods, to just come together and work on this. We need people in general, I think, just to stop, stop with the conflicts and start learning how to, how to work better together.
I'm sorry to go from the deep to the mundane, but I don't know about anyone else, but I am experiencing some technical issues. I know my internet just dropped out, and now I'm not in the team meeting anymore. So I don't know if other people--
We can still hear you.
Oh, we can really hear you, Tabitha. Everybody jumped practically out of their seat. Okay, so you can hear me, but you can't see me, is that right? Okay, well, I guess we'll just keep plugging away here. I also know that there are some members of the community who've indicated that they're having trouble hearing the sound at home, so I know we're working on that as best we can. Oh, maybe I'm back in, maybe? And now, I think, if we're ready, while I know it's hard to go from such a difficult topic to a topic that's a little bit joyful, maybe we can move on to child safety zone? Oh, Ms. Ma'am, was that a hint?
I just really was ecstatic when I heard about the new pupil transportation law. It's something that we have been advocating for, for a number of years. And so, you know, I certainly thank Assemblyman Pat Fahey for her sponsorship, along with Senator Bobbitt. And this is just quite wonderful for the children in our school district.
Ms. McInnes?
Yes, thank you. I echo my colleagues' comments there and express a great deal of thanks to the board's Government Relations Committee, to Superintendent and Cabinet, Mr. Lesko, and probably a whole host of others. But I did want to specifically, and my apologies not to exclude our legislators, they certainly are very, very important here, and I, as I said, I echo what Ms. Ma'am said, and thank Assemblywoman Pat Fahey and Assemblywoman John McDonald, et cetera, and Senator Breslin. I wanted to, though, specifically acknowledge two of my colleagues, one, a former board member, Jen Lang, and also my board president here, Anne Savage, who I believe, when I first came on the board, raised this child safety zone as an issue. And just, they just both were very diligent and persistent and wouldn't let go, a dog with a bone, if you will, and they kept at it, and so thank goodness. And I'm very happy and proud that we were able to make this happen. And I think there, without their leadership and steadfastness, it might have been a little more challenging. But I want to thank you both very much publicly for your drive on this.
Well, thank you very much, and also thanks to Jen Lang, who was definitely the original inspiration for this and put a lot of the energy behind it at the beginning. Like so many things, a lot of hard work and a little luck, because things happened politically that made this happen, and we are grateful that they did. So as the superintendent pointed out, this will not be an immediate change for students tomorrow. There's a fairly lengthy process to get the regulations changed, but we will be continuing to advocate. And we are becoming a well-known voice for the students who need transportation throughout the state. Anybody else say anything on child safety zones, or can we move on? Board member Mneyawi?
I wanted to also give my thanks to all the elected leaders that pushed this forward. I just wanted to make the connection that this legislation is all about equity, especially for our urban students in our urban district. And this is directly related, and I believe will assist in the safety and security of our schools, both before school and after school. So as we were just talking about, this is going to relieve some of the stress that we see from the students that are walking home, hopefully. So thank you.
Okay, are we ready to move on to the feeder alignment committee update? Oh, board member Creji, so sorry.
I just wanted to say, I really am thrilled about the process this time. I love that we put a lot of, the district put a lot of work into selecting a, selecting a committee that's representative of the district, with, I believe, every school represented, people throughout the community. And I really like that the solutions are coming from the community and not coming down from the board, so we know when we get those five options, or however many options are presented to us, that all those options are acceptable to the community, and it's for us to look at as a board and determine which one might be best for the educational needs of the district. I think it's being done the right way, it's being done in a way that supports community voice and participation, and I'm really happy about it. Thanks.
Madam President, if I may add, thank you so very much, Member Creji. One of the things that we did talk about at our last meeting is because even though we started with every school being represented, we've had a decline in participation, but we do have those parents who have been very consistent and vocal, and that was where we made the conversation and the timing of being able to go out to the community to get that input and make sure that even though people may not be participating on the committee, we still want to make sure that we get out to those communities to engage them in that conversation, which is another reason why we may have to extend a few of our dates, because we are definitely making every effort to have a presentation prepared that our committee members are able to share out, and it would then be parent to parent, and not always just the district sharing out a presentation, and that we would be there to support and provide, you know, responses to some of the questions that may come up from the community. But we also know that it is very important to have our committee members in a position where they can articulate what their thought process was, so that it can bring in more parents, because as we know, it's like, you know, peer-to-peer. As a parent talking to another parent, you're going to have some of those same commonalities that are some of the same concerns. And so thank you very much, and we do appreciate that, but that's also why a few of those dates, we may need a little bit more time, because we want to make sure that we're able to go out to the community and get even more input.
That's wonderful, and it's exciting to hear that the community is being involved in this level where they're coming up with ideas rather than just being, you know, rather than just us trying to sell it to them. And I know it might push back the dates, but of course, one of the most important things in the feeder pattern was getting all the sixth graders in the middle schools, and they're there now. So we can wait to have this done correctly, because it's going to be, it's going to shape the district for years. I think it's important to get it done, and have the buy-in of the community.
So I know Dr. Ture has a comment. I just want to add a little bit of other thoughts on the timing of this. We do expect the new feeder pattern to take effect next fall, in the fall of 2022. So it had always been our intention to make that decision by the end of this calendar year, so that parents would have enough opportunity to understand what was going to happen to their current fifth graders and have some time to reflect on that. So I would like to understand a little more about what kind of extension we're thinking that might be needed and when this community feedback might happen, because we are moving into a period where it's extremely difficult to hold community meetings and to get input from community during the holidays. And so are you now thinking that we won't be in a position to make a decision until January?
Yes, looking at, just as we have on the slide, board decision is anticipated in early 2022, and so it may be into January.
Okay, so that's a slip of the schedule, not a terrible one, but it is a slip. So I do ask that we work proactively as, in every way, if we're going to do community meetings, we should have those on the schedule, like next week, whenever they're going to be, they should be on the schedule, because families need plenty of time to wrap their head around what changes are going to come. So I agree with everything Ellen said, and I think you said it beautifully, Ms. Creji, and I really appreciate the community feedback. It's really important that everybody understand and have the opportunity, but we need to do it in a timely way, because most people, in my opinion, are not actually going to start paying attention to this until the day the decision is made, and that's when the time needs to be, some of the time needs to be allocated for. So I'm sorry to have a slightly different opinion on that, but Dr. Ture?
So I'm glad you brought up the issue of participation. I've been following along, watching the videos, and I've noticed that in the last meeting we had just four people. This is incredibly important, right? And I'm glad that we had a good selection of people from across the spectrum, all the schools. And it's, you know, and it's totally understandable, everybody's schedule gets busy and they can make it to meetings. But at this point in time, I think when they narrowed down those five solutions, it is important that the team that has come up with these five solutions communicates to the rest of their committee members as to how they came up, so that they are all in the same, because these people are going to be the nexus points for their schools, their communities. So it'll, you know, when we go to that stage of community participation, these people will be the most important people to make that connection to the community, but they need to understand that first. I would make sure that that connection happens, and we get feedback from them as well before we go to the--
Absolutely, and we totally agree, totally agree that there's no disagreement, totally agree, and we understand the time constraints. We also know that it is, it is going to be, you know, a lot to get through to all of the schools and to get the feedback, but we are definitely committed, and we will be working through it.
Excellent. We look forward to the formal presentation on December 2nd, which is our very next board meeting, so that will be interesting. Now, are we ready to move on to the next slide, set of slides which all has to do with COVID-19? Comments, questions on the several slides in a row around COVID-19 vaccinations? Board member Mneyawi?
Thank you. I didn't notice anywhere, it didn't state anywhere that we would test our teachers or staff that don't have the vaccine daily. Is that something we're doing?
That's where we have those times here at Perry Gibbons, 7:15 to 8:30, but we, regardless of vaccination status, we still allow people to come in and be tested.
Can I ask you a question a slightly different way? Because I have the same question. Is it the case now that every adult in our buildings is either vaccinated, shown proof of vaccine, or is being tested weekly? Are we at that point now?
We're not at the point of everyone being tested weekly, because we're still working on getting that third party with enough staff so that we can do that, but we are testing staff.
I understand. So do we have an estimate for when we'll be at a point where we will be have the weekly testing as a requirement for implement?
Ms. McKenna, can you share that out again, with where we are with the number of people that we were hiring?
Absolutely. So we are in the process of onboarding five out of the nine CNAs to do the testing throughout our district. They're just awaiting the fingerprint clearance, and we've been working closely with Mr. Petron on-- and we've been working closely with Mr. Petron on providing locations on where they can get fingerprinted. So we're real hopeful that after the Thanksgiving break, that we'll be able to, or shortly after, be able to get that testing program up and running in each of our schools.
I understand, thank you very much. Board Member Creji?
Just a quick follow-up question on that is, so right now, the daily testing at Harriet Gibbons is voluntary? The staff members that are voluntarily seeking to get tested for whatever reason?
That is correct. It's voluntary, and they can sign up for an appointment to come in, because we only have limited number of slots every day.
Okay, anything else, anyone else? I know that we're all watching these numbers very, with great concern. We know that Hackett, as Mr. Plano said, is virtual this week, and we know Myers has been virtual. I have to say, as a secondary parent, I really appreciate the fact that we can go so smoothly to distance learning so that we know that we're able to address our instructional needs as well as our health and safety needs. It's not the same as being in the building, but it's better than being quarantined without virtual instruction, in my opinion. So I appreciate that. And I know that every school district is making different decisions about how to handle that, and I think that we have made good choices to prepare our secondary students and teachers so that they can do that as required. Anyone else on COVID-19-related topics of this specific vaccine testing related? Okay, moving on. Then I think the next slide is human resources. Anyone with a question overall on human resources? We are going to go into this in great detail, as there's a human resources presentation tonight. Anything on this slide? Okay, I think we're going to hold our questions in mostly for during the presentation. Let's go on to the next slide, which is maintenance and operations. Anyone with questions here? I'm so thrilled to see that we're close on hiring an assistant director. I know we desperately need to have all of our staff members filled, so that is really terrific news. Are we closing in on filling all the vacancies for our line staff custodians and other maintenance and operations staff? Are we getting close?
We are still in the process, and so we are, I'm going to say that we are still in the process.
Okay, so there's still opportunities for walk-in interviews and applications. Mr. Petron from the back says, yes, please come see me at Academy Park. I'm there all the time. Come and see me, okay. So if folks know people who are interested in our custodial jobs, the salaries and benefits for which are on the website, you can find all of the information you need on the website in the HR department. So I encourage people to take a look at those jobs. All right, shall we move on beyond maintenance and operations? That brings us now to the instructional update, the core of what we do. It's always funny to have it in the middle, and you know, it's the most important for the center of the world. Board Member Creji?
My question was, have we begun to activate the quarantine teachers and tutors yet?
Dr. Wilson Turner?
Yes, both at the elementary and secondary level, we were able to hire a tutor to provide at least two hours of tutoring for each grade level, three times a week. There's a schedule that has gone out to the building. I know Ron did a generic communication for us a couple of weeks ago about that there would be some quarantine instruction available for families. And so we get a list each day of students who are out sick for isolation quarantine, and our tutors use that list to reach out to families to provide direct support so that they're getting direct outreach, but also have the letter as a reference. And shout out to Mr. Baker's department and Ms. Wolf for creating a rolling report so that we could see each day who would need tutoring services and stay on top of providing that to students.
So you said the elementary students get two hours of instruction three times a week. What about secondary?
I'll let Ms. McKenna speak to that.
Yeah, so very similar to the elementary, they're also getting that level of support every day in tutoring. And we've also collaborated with Mr. Baker's office to get that report sent to our teacher tutors and our secondary leaders to ensure that students are taking advantage of the tutoring.
I want to pause this for one more follow-up question. For the secondary students, are they getting just the core classes? Or are they getting instruction in like foreign language or whatever specific classes they might be taking?
So they are getting support primarily in the four cores, but the teacher tutors that we have partnered with are also providing a level of support to students with whatever assignment they need support from or with, because those assignments are in their Google Classroom, and so the tutors can support them in those as well.
Thank you.
Can I ask a little bit more about the number one bullet, increased focus on supporting social, emotional, and mental health of our students, faculty, and staff? Can we get to just a, I know that we talk, when I speak to each of my board colleagues and to you, Superintendent, individually, I know how much we care about this, right? We recognize what a difficult period it is for our students and for our staff and for our faculty, and what a very challenging experience this is to teach and operate a school in this environment. And that's true not just in Albany, it's true across the country. And the reports are really difficult in every single community that I've been reading about. And so I wondered if we could talk a little bit more about how we are really supporting the social and emotional mental health, both for students but also for faculty and staff?
I'm going to ask that Ms. McKenna address the students really quickly. And Mr. Petron, if you could come and speak to some of the things that we've been doing in HR with regard to the social, emotional well-being of our faculty and staff? Ms. McKenna?
Sure, so we're doing a variety of things, and I'll ask Dr. Wilson Turner to jump in to add anything for our elementary schools. But we have increased our social workers and our behavior specialists in each of our elementary and secondary buildings. And we have also engaged in our ruler training, which is a social, emotional curriculum. As you know, teachers are going through that training this year, and we'll be implementing that in September. But in the interim, there's still a social, emotional curriculum that we are using this year while we train on the new system. We have, you know, social and emotional groups set up, and our social workers and our behavior specialists are leading those groups to better support our kiddos. We are partnering with outside agencies such as Northern Rivers to provide a level of, another level of support for students who need social, emotional support. So we are wrapping around our kiddos with our internal resources through our social workers, behavior specialists, and our psychologists, as well as our external partners. Dr. Wilson Turner, did you want to add anything?
No, I think you covered it.
And then on the staff side of the house, you know, our buildings are providing supports to our staff, whether that be through additional onboarding or support activities for substitutes and other staff that are new to the building or trying to get their arms around things, making sure that they have access to the resources they need. From the district level, we are reinforcing the use of our EAP program, making sure that they know that service is out there. My team is often responding to any requests that staff have for any use of benefits, leave time, things like that, making sure that they have ready access to the things that they need so that they can get back to work focused on the things that they need to do.
I'm sorry, I just need to ask one mathematical follow-up question. I heard Ms. McKenna say we've increased the number of social, emotional staff that we have, but on the slide that you presented tonight, it's basically flat since 2019. Now, our enrollment's down probably five, six percent since 2019. So even a flat staff would be a reduced caseload. But am I understanding those numbers correctly? That while we have, you know, we have an increased staff since the prior to COVID year on social, emotional? It's basically flat or close to flat? Is that, is that, am I understanding the numbers correctly?
Yes, I think what Ms. McKenna meant by increase is last year, we significantly reduced the support staff that we had on site during the school year. And this year saw a return to those levels that were more appropriate for the needs of our population.
I understand. So it's an increase versus last year when we were not in person, but it's basically flat in terms of the number of employees, although because our enrollment is down, that is actually a better student to, teacher or faculty member ratio? Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Anyone else for anything here on this slide?
Can I just add one more thing, and I was just remiss in not mentioning it before? I just wanted to give a shout out too to Karen Beckdahl and the four core supervisors, because they were instrumental in helping to get the secondary quarantine tutors off the ground and up and running. So I just wanted to give a shout out to them.
Thank you very much. I know that that's an essential aspect of our being able to provide the instruction we need to provide to our students during this time. So we very much appreciate that work to create yet one more brand-new system that we never had before, which has been the theme of the last two years. So, thank you for that interruption, and I appreciate it. All right, so now we are, anything else on instruction? Are we ready to talk about early childhood? Okay, early childhood, questions, thoughts, comments? Board Member Creji?
I just had a question, and it may not be something, it may not be something we know, but is the decline due to parents seeking other facilities? Or are more people during the pandemic seeking to have their young children at home with them?
I don't think I could accurately answer that. I mean, I think our speculation, what we saw through COVID last year, it was very hard to fill our seats. I think we came, when we did our presentation, worried about our ability to meet our maintenance of effort, particularly with three-year-olds, with COVID being so prevalent in person. Even when we offered virtual options, it wasn't something families wanted to take advantage of. And so they may just be waiting to the children who are a little bit older to have them engage in school in this pandemic environment. We don't have a sense that there is an exodus to go to other programmings. We work pretty closely with the majority of community-based early childhood programs in our area in some capacity or another. So we really do think it's the impact of a pandemic on whether you send a young child to school in person during this time.
Thanks, it's a relief to know that people aren't fleeing to go to other programs, and yet it speaks to a future challenge when we get all these kindergartners that haven't been to school before that we'll need to be ready for.
Thank you, because you just gave me an opening to publicly praise Ms. Hasty again, because we had a visit with SED for our receivership schools, and they noted that there must be something significant that happens in our pre-K programs for our kindergarten scores to enter as they do in the fall. And so that will be a significant impact, Board Member Creji, if we're not able to regain that student population, if it exists in our community, to get them back in our early childhood programs.
Board Member Smith?
Great, thank you, Dr. Wilson Turner. Just a question, and I'm very happy to see, again, more of the discussion of equity here. One piece that I wanted to ask about, I know that during, I remember, I believe, during the last two years, we may have lost some of our providers. And I wondered if you could later provide some information as to the numbers of providers that are of color and whether or not we've lost some of those providers or regained them this cycle? Thank you.
Anyone else on early childhood? Does that mean, maybe that's changing? Bobby says, no, it was not me. All right. Okay, well, I think that brings us to the end now of the district update. And so it brings us now to the time that we hear from members of our community. We always appreciate members of the public coming to share their thoughts with us, and I'm just stalling while I look for my script, sorry. We always welcome input from the community about the decisions we are making. Per our longstanding policy, we set aside up to 30 minutes of each meeting to hear from district residents, parents, students, and other members of our community. If there are not more comments tonight than can be accommodated in 30 minutes, however, if that does happen, we can either choose to extend the length of the public comment period or alternatively establish a second public comment period later in the meeting, or sometimes at a different time. We do also accept comments, but in writing. We have two written comments tonight and by voicemail. Comments that are not in person should be made at least six hours prior to the meeting to give us time to collect and verify them as needed. Written comments can be, must be limited to 400 words, and voicemail to three minutes. We do require that all comments include commenter's name and place of residence. We do not accept anonymous comments. In the future, if you want to look at how you can submit your comments, you want to go to albanyschools.org/boe. I believe we have one person signed up to speak, and I welcome Councilman Ballerin to come to the microphone at his convenience. We do ask that all commenters keep in mind that information about individual students and specific district staff cannot be shared. Not only is that a violation of privacy, but every student and every staff member deserves the due process they are entitled to, and to know that concerns about them will not be aired in public. For that reason, when we do read comments, we pass over or substitute alternative words if individual names are mentioned. We do also ask that you keep in mind that public comment is not the best place to first alert the district to a concern you have. We ask that you share concerns first with relevant staff, such as the teacher or principal. If you feel the concern is not addressed adequately, you may appeal to that person's supervisor up the chain of command, if necessary, to the superintendent. Decisions made by the superintendent may be appealed by, appealed to the board. So now, I am sorry that took so long. It does seem rather lengthy, but we welcome you to share your thoughts for up to three minutes. Dr. Tchur will flash you the time signs, so take a look at him from time to time.
Thank you, it's good to see you all again. I hope you're all doing well, I hope your families are doing well. I'm here again about issues that we're dealing with at the dismissal at the high school. I know you're all aware of it, and I know you're all trying to find solutions and trying to do the best you can to try to keep our kids safe. I know that there was an option that was going to be looked at about hiring and outsourcing for Google Security to possibly be able to get boots on the ground on Washington and Quell. I mean, that's the problem. I say that all the time. The school district does an excellent job on Till-Potters. They do an excellent job, they do a great job. They've got staff out there, they've got the principal out there, you've got the superintendent out there today. You know, I couldn't ask for more, and not black. But when you go over to Washington and Quell, don't have the same attitude vision. You've got law enforcement, which is there, but they're also keeping their distance, because there are times where if you've got officers, get out of their car, it can create a ruckus more than, you know, because students feel like, why are you here? We're not doing anything, and so forth and so forth. And I've seen that, and I've seen that. And I think it's great that we are working with partners and volunteers, and as many volunteers as possible. But volunteers can do it all, you just can't. You know, you can't expect a volunteer to be there every day. You can't expect a volunteer to be there every week. You need hired staff. And I understand that you can't get school district staff to do so. Fine, then please seek out the funding to bring in this outside entity. Please seek out the funding. I know that it, I was told it's probably going to be about $700,000 to $800,000. I get that, that's a lot of money, that's a lot of money. I'm willing to look and work with our city and state partners to see if we can find funding. I'm willing to try to work with our private groups to try to get funding. I'm willing to start a GoFundMe account to try to get funding. I know we don't want to have funding that should be going to educational purposes be shifted away. I get that. But our kids are drowning on Washington and Quell. They're drowning. And you need a lifeguard that's steady, that's paid, that is going to be there consistently to keep our kids safe. And we can have the community support them, but we need adults that we know are going to be there. And that's what I'm hoping the school district is able and willing to do. Thank you again, always good to see you all. And I wish you all a very, very happy Thanksgiving and a healthy holiday season, if I don't see you afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and to you as well. We do have two written comments tonight, and I'm going to turn over the microphone to Board Member Almenyawi to read the two comments.
My first comment is from Lauren Clemmons. It states, although the primary transmission route of COVID-19 is through the inhalation of aerosol droplets exhaled by an infected person, respiratory droplets exhaled by an infected person, respiratory droplets are not mixed uniformly through an indoor space. For that reason, installing plexiglass dividers on students' desks at the beginning of the school year was probably quite effective in reducing the spread of the disease. I no longer believe, however, that the school district's COVID safety protocol should include these dividers. The reasons are twofold. First, the district is beginning to unroll both screening and diagnostic testing in schools, and vaccines are now available to younger children. These measures, together with frequent handwashing, mask mandates, and social distancing make the plexiglass dividers obsolete. Equally important is the fact that the screens have become an enormous detriment to learning, perhaps especially in the elementary classrooms. Screens are distraction, and they routinely fall over, disrupting learning. I have heard instances of students cutting themselves on sharp edges. Three months into the school year, the screens are dirty and difficult to see through. When my third grader's physician recently asked if she had difficulty seeing the board at school, she said only because it's difficult to see through the many layers of plastic between her and the front of the classroom. I appreciate how hard the district works to protect all of our children, but there is no doubt that the plexiglass dividers prevent students from giving their full attention to their classwork. So many students fell behind during the height of the pandemic, and while teachers and building staff are working incredibly hard to make up for lost time, the plexiglass dividers are a barrier to learning that would be easy to remove in light of newly available measures that protect our children from COVID-19. The next letter states, hello, we would like to submit the following to be read as a public comment during the school board meeting. We are writing to you as the current social work team at the Albany High School. There continues to be ongoing narrative about prioritizing the social, emotional needs of our students as we face unprecedented need during our return to in-person learning post-COVID. It is important to bring your attention to the fact that we at Albany High remain the only building to not be returned to our 2019-2020 levels of social work staff. In the 2019-2020 school year and the years prior, we had seven social workers and a behavior specialist in our building. At this time, we are slated to have zero behavior specialists and six social workers, although only five of those positions are filled. To be clear, school social workers provide both mandated services to students with disabilities and necessary support to the entire population of students in Albany High School. We provide hands-on support to students when there is crisis in the schools, including suicidal ideation, self-injurious behavior, child abuse, student-peer conflict, and responses to community violence. Once alerted, school social work partners, school social workers partner with our students and their families by providing counseling support. We teach important coping and resiliency skills and connect our students with community supports that help them stay safe. There has been a significant increase in the amount of students who require support in one or more of these areas. School social workers have been more involved than ever in responding to the need of students during the COVID-19 pandemic and the transition back into the school setting. Since the start of this 21-22 school year, there's ongoing need for social, emotional support for many students who never before sought social work support. During this time, students and families have felt a lack of connection to their school community and shared with us. There are increased feelings of school anxiety, isolation, difficult family dynamics, death and loss, and quite frankly, an unimaginable level of stress. We work every day to ensure students are supported to increase this connection to school. With equity being the goal and acknowledging the need of our students, we know they deserve the level of staffing they had before cuts were made. The 2019-2020 levels of social work and behavior specialist staffing is needed at Albany High School. Our students deserve this support this school year more than ever. Thank you. The Albany High School Social Work Team, Katie Basilakis, Peter Cantrowitz, Leasha Cherry, Patty Donan, Kathy Shaw.
Thank you very much for reading, and I want to remind everyone that we do appreciate all public comments. We find hearing from our community members so valuable. Again, our contact information for both public comment and for routine correspondence is at albanyschools.org/boe. We now move to the part of our meeting we call routine consent. During this portion of the meeting, we approve routine matters for the district, including items like contracts, field trips, personnel matters, and the like. Each board member reviews each item carefully, but we vote on them as a group with no discussion. That allows us to use our meeting time more efficiently. Nonetheless, each board member has the option to set aside any routine consent item in order to require a separate discussion and a separate vote on that item. With that introduction, I'll now entertain a motion to adopt the routine consent agenda. Motion by Damaris Mann. Second, second by Board Member Creji. Are there any set asides? Seeing none, all in favor of the routine consent agenda in its entirety. That is unanimous. And that brings us to the end of our action agenda. We will not, we do not anticipate taking any further actions tonight, although stranger things have happened. We could still take an action, but we do not intend to. We do, will now begin with the discussion topic. First discussion topic is summer school. Superintendent Adams.
Thank you so very much. And just as, I'd like to go back just for a quick moment to acknowledge Mr. Raymond Johnson, who is our new Assistant Director of Facilities. So congratulations to him. He's been with us for a long time, and we're so very happy to have him in this new administrative role. At this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Wilson Turner and Ms. McKenna to introduce our presenters for summer school.
Good evening again. I will start with an introduction for the elementary summer school presentation. We are joined this evening by our assistant principals for the elementary level, who took over the summer school program this year for the first year. And we had several of them, because we have several elementary assistant principals, who played different roles in this process over the summer, as well as our coordinator, Tammy Keough. This evening, we have presenting to us Janet Escole-Lavoy, who is Assistant Principal at Arbor Hill Elementary School, William Flaxlight, who's one of the Assistant Principals at Giffen Memorial Elementary School, Marilyn Jones Oliver, who's Assistant Principal for Skylar Achievement Academy, and Allison Brody, who is the Assistant Principal for Pine Hills Elementary School, and Amelia Gallagher, who recently became an Assistant Principal at Myers Middle School, but has been with us at Delaware Community School. We also had Tina Cascone, Assistant Principal of Sheridan Preparatory Academy, and Jared Fox, who is now our principal at Eagle Point, who played instrumental roles in the summer school program. I will give just another brief introduction. We were in four sites this year, and so we were able to coordinate services once again with our community partners. And our assistant principals this evening are prepared to take you through our efforts this summer and our impact to date. And so I will turn it over to Bill, excuse me, Mr. Flaxlight, who will begin our presentation.
Hello all. First of all, just to give a real quick overview of the program. As you guys know, the program ran from July 6th to August 13th. The academic day extended from eight o'clock in the morning until 12:30 PM, whereupon our elementary students enjoyed enrichment period until 4:30. As we said, there were three locations. New Scotland Elementary serves students from Arbor Hill, Giffen, Montessori, and New Scotland. Pine Hills Elementary serves students from Ash, Eagle Point, Delaware Community, and Pine Hills. And the school that I had the pleasure of serving at this summer was the Skylar Achievement Academy, which serves students from that site, also from Sheridan Prep, and from Toast. So the goals of our program, of course, were to seek out and reinforce students who have demonstrated high growth but low achievement. So the goal was to focus on our kids who were closing gaps, that the kids were moving forward and making gains but needed a little bit more time. Of course, because of COVID and the pandemic and the gaps in consistent testing, interruptions in instruction such, the program wound up focusing on serving all students. So essentially, we accepted all comers to our program. The program, as I said, was a six-week-long program. Five weeks were, five weeks included academic instruction. One week was enrichment exclusively. Can you move to the next slide? Thank you. And the program overview in terms of staffing, the next slide provides information on the individual staffing for each building. So each building essentially had a coordinator onsite, had about nine to 11 teachers, approximately 10 teachers, coaches who were shared, building subs, et cetera, ENL teacher, three to four TAs. Each site had a nurse, had a nurse dedicated to the site, which was important, of course, with all the extra, you know, concerns over COVID and such. It was great having someone at each individual site all the time for the entire program, a secretary, and we also shared a social worker as well. The other slide, the other side of this slide shows a breakdown across all three sites of the number of students served at each location. So we had 121 kindergartners, 146 first graders, 117 second graders, 109 third graders, 96 fourths, 67 fifth, for a grand total of 656 students who were served by the program. Thank you.
Hi, and thank you, Board Members and Superintendent Adams, for having us here tonight. My name's Allison Brody. I'm the Assistant Principal at Pine Hills Elementary School. And I will walk us through the attendance slide. So as we look at the slide, we can see that the average daily attendance for all sites was 71% for the 415 students who remained in the program for the entire program. This was a decrease from 2019, when we were last in person. So that attendance rate was 85.5, and it was also a decrease from the 77.1% we had in 2020 when we went virtual. We believe that there were a couple reasons for this, leading to this decrease in attendance. The main factor being following those COVID protocols that were put in place and are in place for our district. Another factor is during our summer program, we were more lenient with the attendance. Normally, we would dismiss a student from the program with three or more absences to be able to allow a student to attend each day at the program. This time, we were really accommodating and really were more lenient with that policy for reasons, you know, with the pandemic and that kind of thing, trying to serve all students. And then we will move on to Amelia Gallagher with the update for ELA and our math growth.
Good evening, Board of Education and Superintendent Adams. Thanks for having us here tonight. It's my pleasure to speak about our ELA and math metrics and our student performance during our summer program. Our metrics for ELA were focused around our Lexia program, which focuses on foundational literacy skills, and it uses a pre-test to tailor a specific program to individualize student needs, which is really outstanding for their instruction and finishing up, completing up those gaps or that unfinished learning that they may have received. And as you can see, the good news here is at each grade level, you will see increase from the beginning to the end, K all the way through five from summer school, from starting levels all the way up to ending levels. Some grades grew obviously more than others, but most of our students grew pretty close to a .5 Lexia level throughout the time that they were in summer program for only five weeks, which is substantial, and a little bit better than they would have done if they were in school during that same amount of time. Next slide, please. Here we have a slide that breaks down each of our different sites, our New Scotland, Pine Hills, Skylar, and the whole program. As you can see, some of the sites had greater growth than others and started off at higher levels in the pre-test than they did with their ending levels. Some of the, some of the gaps or differences that we noticed were definitely tied to attendance, or students attending that last week to get our pre-test, which is where our pre-test occurred. If students weren't present during that time, we weren't, we were unable to grab a pre-test from them. But again, the good news here is each site definitely grew. Some sites grew more than others. And here is where you can see about right around the .46 to .5 average growth across our sites, which is really great. And next slide, please. Thank you. More good news. This also looks really, really promising for our five-week program. We did grab pre-assessments in math and our math metrics. And just to double back, our math metrics program that we used is also a very individualized program that focuses on skills that our students will need to be successful, that they, those foundational skills that they need to go into the next grade level for which they were in summer school moving into. Okay. So, and as you can see, in kindergarten and first grade, you would definitely normally see exponential growth for those students. And as you progress along, you will see in each of the grade levels of substantial growth in each of the different grades. In our next slide, please. Then this will break down into our by-site performance. Again, you will see a common theme in our K1, based on those students tend to grow significantly. And they did again here with us. And again, those zeros may be for students that did not, that we did, were unable to grab a pre-test from. Thank you. And then Skylar Achievement Academy. Similarly, you'll see growth in K1, and you'll see growth all the way through in all grade levels, which is really promising for our five-week program. In our next slide, please. In New Scotland, same, similar type of data in which you're seeing your growth, your largest growth in K1, and then a sporadic different sets of growth throughout the two, three, four, and fifth grade students. However, most showed growth and improvement throughout our five-week program. Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Education and Superintendent Adams. I am Janet Escole-Lavoy, and I am the Assistant Principal at Arbor Hill Elementary. And I'm going to be speaking to you tonight in regards to the strengths and challenges of the summer school program. I think that's something that's not listed on our slide, and it's the most important strength, is that we got to see our babies in person for the first time in a very, very long time. And I have to tell you that I speak for my colleagues and for our teachers, and it was extremely enlightening. And on that very first day, it was actually very emotional, not only for us, but for our students. You can't hide smiles behind masks. So I think that, for me, that was the highlight of the whole program that turned out to be a great success. In regards to our academic program, for ELA, we used the Wonders K5 program, and it was front-loaded. We front-loaded the curriculum for the upcoming school year so that, for example, students who completed first grade were introduced to second-grade material in the hopes that they would feel a level of confidence at the beginning of the school year. And for math instruction, for first through fifth grade, the students were provided math instruction using a resource called Math Navigator. And this program provided focus on, they allowed for the teachers and the students to dive into those skills and concepts. around mathematical standards. And math instruction for our K students was provided utilizing the Envision resources and protocols for counting collections. And just on a side note, for those of you that don't know what the counting collections are, they offer multiple entry points for children at different places on the counting trajectory. And early on, another success that we had is we met with the YMCA and the Boys and Boys and Girls Club, where we met actually several times, and we were able to plan a successful program, having them involved. And our teachers, the Albany City School District teachers that provided enrichment for our students in the areas of art, music, and technology, education, were present at the four sites. And as far as our challenges go, our, our number one challenge was student attendance. I think that at the start of the enrollment for summer school, a lot of our families, you know, absolutely, it was the first time they were, students were going to be in person, which is what they had been asking for. They signed up. However, we noted that at the beginning of the program, a lot of the families didn't show up, and when contacting them, you know, through phone calls and our homeschool coordinators, they, they were a little bit more guarded, and they chose to keep their students home. And then we had some families that would not come every day, so this, of course, affected the class sizes because not everybody was present. And also, we did have some schools that had a higher enrollment, so for that reason, the class sizes were uneven, something that was a big success as well, mostly for the kids because they really enjoyed it, is we started a week early of enrichment, and, and I guess because the kids have been at, had been out of school for so long, this, this, they enjoyed this. However, for teachers and for staff members, it became a bit of a challenge, only because the week, the second week of summer school, we were back to business, you know, routines, academics, and it was a little hard to get back into that, so it provided a little bit of a challenge. Just like we are currently right now, it was a challenges, you know, it was a challenge to hire teachers, but, you know, we persevered and we had a good staff in all of our buildings. Another challenge that we found was that families did struggle with electronic registration. It was struggling, it was, it was difficult because many submitted the applications, they weren't found. We had to fill them out for them, they came in to fill them out, so we do have a plan in place for that for next year so that we won't have that struggle. Mrs. Marilyn Jones Oliver will now speak to you about the family and parent survey.
Hello, Superintendent Adams and the board. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. I'm talking about staff and family surveys, and as you can see, the staff speaks. They say everything worked well, it was engaging and easily accessible. Staff say, I think, providing teachers with all materials they need helps the students be successful. The hours of the academics worked well. Families say that one specific family member said, "My son enjoyed the program, and I was happy that it was offered to us, it was engaging, and he was able to keep up with his studies." Next slide, please. The staff and family survey, we created a graph. As you can see, the enrichment program was worthwhile experience for my child. 10.5% of them disagree, 5.3% disagree, strongly disagreed, first 10.5%, sorry, and 5.3% disagreed. 36.8 strongly agree, and 47.4 agree with it. And the staff felt that in their professional opinion, students found curriculum cognitively engaging, 4.5% disagreed, 14.8% disagreed, sorry, strongly disagreed and disagreed, and 17.0 strongly agreed, and 63.6 agreed. Next slide, please. And the improvements to be made based on the surveys, the family says more communication leading up to the first day of the program, and start academics the first week. This is what they felt would be more effective for them. And the teachers felt that providing class lists and guidance in advance would be okay, would be a good thing, actually, and improving communication between the enrichment programs and the teachers. So we really had a good time, but just so you know, the staff and family survey is just what it is, so we can, you know, make some improvement, but I, I think overall, it was pretty good. I think the next slide goes to my colleague. Thank you for your time.
Oops. All right, I think I'm unmuted. Sorry about that. There were some recommendations that we were able to develop after some discussion after the program, none of which have an additional budget impact, but we were talking about a system where we would call and be able to confirm attendance prior to the summer school program rather than just relying solely on the online application. So reviewing dates and times with families would be helpful. Also collaborating and working through the registration with our community partners and utilizing, utilizing them to support with that. And then finally, that enrichment program that the students really enjoyed was a great addition to our program. Originally, well, this past year, we had it in the beginning, so we had a first week of enrichment, followed by our regular programming, five weeks of the first half being academic, second half being the enrichment program. And we said it would be really helpful if we put that first week of just enrichment at the end so that we'd be able to focus on our routines, procedures, all our systems that we have in place would really be supportive for our, our staff, as well as the students and families to kind of get, get used to a system, go through it, and then have that fun at the end. But all ideas with no additional budget impact.
Thank you very much all for the presentation. We always love to talk about summer school because we know it's such an important part of some of our students' education. You guys did a great job sharing with us the pros and the cons and what happened. So I will turn it over to Board colleagues. Does anybody have a question or a comment? Dr. Chatur?
I had a question about the math metrics. What is so special about the third grade? Because it's, it's, you know, all the data were zero percent. It's consistently, all three, all third grade numbers, either pre or post, are zero percent. So isn't something about no attendance of third grade students specifically at all three sites?
It, it could be the standard that was selected as the focus for that five-week period of time was one that was an area of need for our third graders, and thus you see that pre-assessment be at zero or flat, and then, you know, very small movement in that grade level. When you look at that summer school data, it does unfortunately mirror what we see in school year, where our primary grades tend to make those gains really quickly, and it's harder to get those gains in math as quickly in our intermediate grades. What we've started to do is start to reflect on what, what sits in that 0% proficient, because there may be growth within that that doesn't trigger them becoming proficient, but they are moving within that level, and so we could do a deeper dive in whether or not they moved in the assessment overall, versus, but just not enough to tip them up to the next level of proficiency.
I wanted to just make a very positive comment about the suggestion about making phone calls to parents. I thought that sounds like an excellent step. I know that, as a parent, I have felt that there's more positive phone calls coming home during this school year. It's definitely noticeable from what I hear other parents saying, and so I love the idea of building that into summer school because I think you'll get commentary as well as confirmation of registration, and you'll learn a little bit more about your students that you're going to be experiencing. When I first became a parent in a school district, somebody told me, when you interact with a teacher, remember that the teachers are an expert in pedagogy, but you're the expert in your student, right? And that's, that's really a special relationship between the parent and the teacher that can really be built with that, that phone call, so I really appreciate that. I did want to ask Dr. Wilson Turner a question, which I know we talked about years ago, and I don't know if we ever got anywhere with, which is whether there is a way to track the success of our summer school students over time after they return. You know, do we know that summer school has an impact that lasts for our students? And I know that it's about learning loss prevention in many cases, although we did those this year, but I know that we've kind of tried to tackle that, and we've had a few other things on our plate, so if we haven't gotten to it, that's fine. I'm just curious about whether there's either within the district or anyplace else, studies that really talk about whether summer school has a long-term impact on student success.
I mean, it's a good question for our, our data analysts, and we, we had that gap last year, not being able to use our standard data points. And so it's something we could probably have Dr. Robin look at, just our own summer results over time, to see if those students who participate do have that benefit. I can't say that I've seen anything in the research that says if I participate in summer school year after year after year, I make more substantial gains than other students. And I don't know if we have that level of consistency in our participants, you know, with the, if we would have a large enough N, so to speak, that we would be able to make that determination. But we are back in business to receive our comparison of how our summer school students sit on the fall assessment versus those who, like students who did not participate in summer, and I could see if it'd be validated for us to go back a few years and see if we can see that over time.
Would be very, very interesting. It is, it is a, you know, a significant expenditure of everyone's energy and finances to do this, so it would be nice to know if it's really making a difference, and I have to believe it is, but data is always helpful.
And I almost wonder, President Savage, if he, if he's able to look within a school year, right? So yes, they, they started out stronger in the fall, but do they end as, you know, stronger than those students in the spring, and do they carry that benefit forward, even in one year, if you can't do it over multiple years due to the gaps in our data? And if I can just take a second, I've left two people off who are not here this evening, but who were instrumental in summer school, and that is Glenn Westfall, who's our Assistant Principal over at ASH, and then Scott Thompson, believe it or not, did a stint with us in summer school, even though he's over at TCE, and so I wanted to thank them both, as well as our instructional supervisors, Sarah and Lynn, who were instrumental in the curriculum development, and our instructional coaches who helped lift that off the ground.
Thank you very much. It's always good to acknowledge everyone. We know how hard you work. I wish we could, like, do a roll call for, like, every staff member for this, to get every board meeting, because we really do know how hard you guys are all working, and we try and remember to identify everybody, so we appreciate you so much. Board Member Crete.
I had a question that was akin to Dr. Chatur's question, but it was more the, the older grades in general, that it seems like this elementary program is having really phenomenal results with the younger kids, and yet the grades, the improvements both in ELA and in math for third and fourth and fifth graders were really so much lower, and I had been wondering as well whether it was an attendance problem, a behavioral problem, a motivational problem. I'd looked at the sixth grade, I'd looked at the middle school statistics, and it seems like the sixth and seventh graders, you know, the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders are making gains, so I'm wondering what it is about these third, fourth, and fifth graders this year that just wasn't, they weren't, they weren't getting off the block.
I mean, I think, you know, similar to what I said to Dr. Chatur, I think we do see that in our, in our elementary data consistently, not just in summer, is that our, our, our primary students tend to fare very well, and as the rigor increases as they go in three through five, we do see that they don't, they're not growing as fast or performing as strongly to move to proficiency, but, you know, they do, we do see that movement in the levels. It could be us going back and looking at what is our focus in math in particular. I know we see it in both math and ELA for instruction in summer, and how we could see more growth there, but it, it, it is a trend that we notice as we move through the grade levels, and we're trying to mirror the rigor that they're going to face when they go into the classroom, so it, it does align in that way. What I will say is it also may be how we're engaging those students. What we found this summer in particular was the science units that our instructional supervisor and coach designed were the most engaging parts of summer school, and the research searches always borne out, the more engaging and different from the regular school year you can make summer school, the more successful the results will be. And so we do have some work to do there to look at how we can maybe make those STEM connections, make that math more engaging, and see more success in our summer programs.
It seems, thank you for explaining that. That might make a lot of sense to me as a hypothesis, because that could explain why the sixth graders who are getting the STEM every, you know, getting that science and math and social studies in ELA every day are more engaged than the fifth graders that are just doing the math in ELA. So thank you.
Board colleagues, are we ready to move on to middle school? All right. Thank you so much, elementary folks. We really appreciate you being here with us tonight and all the work you did all summer and all year long. Dr. Wilson Turner, are you gonna, no, Dr. McKenna? Ms. McKenna, I'm sorry.
Ms. McKenna. Good evening, President Savage, Board members, Superintendent Adams, colleagues, and community members. I am honored to introduce our amazing middle-level Assistant Principal team, Brianna Olson and Teresa Adalian from Myers, April Stokes and Lisa House from Hackett, Emma Steckman from North Albany, and although now not, now a part of our elementary leadership team, Tamitra Rose and Megan DeLisandra were both integral and continue to support and partner in the middle-level summer program as well, so thank you to them. And then last but not least, this fabulous team planned and implemented a summer school program from budget development, interviewing and hiring, scheduling, and the overall operations of summer school for students in grades six through eight who needed this additional support prior to moving to the next grade level. And then I also want to give a shout out to our instructional supervisors, who were also instrumental in the professional development for teachers and the program development for teaching and learning that happened during our middle-level summer program. So without further ado, I am now going to turn it over to the middle school leadership team to present on the 2021 Summer School Start Program.
Hi, my name is Emma Steckman, and I am going to be representing our group tonight. And so to start, our in-person model was offered Monday through Friday in the morning at Steven here at Myers Middle School. All students had access to CDTA regardless of where they lived in the city using a summer fund pass, and we offered the four core classes. In addition, we had physical education, and then we had the support of reading teachers, two full-time social workers, guidance counselors, and then, of course, our homeschool coordinator supported as well. We automatically enrolled students based on the end-of-the-year academic data, so it was more of an opt-out as opposed to an opt-in, and it was open to 360 students total. You can see there what our totals were for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, 90 for sixth, 126 for seventh, and 144 for eighth, for a total of 282 students. We had four math, four science, four ELA, four social studies, three E and L, two reading teachers, along with the special education teacher, the social workers that we talked about earlier, coordinator, a couple subs, and our PE teachers, and the budget was a CRSSA funding. So one of the strengths of the program was that this year, we managed to hire all city school district of Albany staff in previous years. We've had to hire folks who don't work in the district during the school year, so that was really great. We also had a really wonderful Tier One behavioral program where students could access a store weekly with really high incentive items. We had makeup, we had basketballs, we had, I think, skateboards, all kinds of things that students indicated interest in. We benefited from the addition of two full-time social workers. We knew going into the summer that the social-emotional needs of our students was likely to be very high, and so our social workers were really able to support us in that capacity. It was all in-person, which was a change from last school year, supported by us as assistant principals and then the homeschool coordinators. We managed a one-to-one Chromebook distribution, so students were able to carry over the model of instruction that they had been working on over the course of the school year, and we also know that that carries through to this year in the sense that students continue to be in that one-to-one Chromebook model. And then a real strength for us was the registration process and that students were automatically enrolled based on the end-of-year data, so we didn't have to seek out the forms in the same way. So our metrics, our pre-to-post test, you see across the board that students saw an improvement in both ELA and math, more substantial in ELA, although eighth-grade math really stands out there. And then our grading policy was not really a number grade, it was really to focus on, you know, student growth and providing feedback around that growth, and so there was commentary, providing... And so there was commentary provided to students at week two and at week five, those progress reports were sent out. Although the grades were updated weekly in school tools, so students had a sense of where they were over the course of the program. And the goal was that each class would offer a minimum of eight assignments. So PBIS, for those who need a reminder, is Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports. And so students earned Falcon dollars for meeting those district-wide expectations of be respectful, be responsible, and be safe. They got an actual paper copy of a dollar, and they had to accumulate those. And as they accumulated those, they could either spend them weekly on smaller prizes or if they wanted, they could bank them over the course of the program to purchase something larger. And so they felt really motivated by that. And then at the end, regardless, all students earned a water bottle, a backpack and a mask with our Albany logo on it to carry them over into the school year. So our recommendations for next year would be to maintain a middle level summer school coordinator, to lead the propping and implementation of program with the support of assistant principals, to provide that week-to-week continuity, a transition to a skill-based program versus a content-based program. And then we'd like to refine our transportation process and protocols. So we would have the double CDTA buses, the really big ones for those of you who are not familiar, that the buses would pick up at the school itself rather than White Hole Road, and that we would run those CDTA tripper routes so that rather than all of our students getting on the 106 at the end of the day and doing the loop around the city, they could have more direct transport to their neighbor and potentially to limit riders to that 1.5 mile distance. And that's it. So if you have any questions, my colleagues are ready to jump in.
Well, we thank you as we did the elementary team. We know that middle school, summer school must be a very exciting period, so we appreciate all of the work that you do to make it fun and engaging for our students. Board colleagues, any questions for our middle school team? I know I had asked a couple of questions earlier, and Ms. McKenna straightened me out on a couple of things, so I think my questions have been mostly answered. In particular, I was noting that it was pretty different in terms of the impact of summer school, in terms of your retention versus grade progress was, progression to high school was pretty different this year from past years. So that's, I don't know, did that change the way students approached summer school? Did you feel like they understood that it was not a sort of a do-or-die situation in terms of progressing to the next grade? I feel like Ms. Steckman might be frozen.
No, I'm good, I'm here. So, so I think that, you know, we, we didn't necessarily frame it that way. I think the framing was, we're here to provide you with the skills that you need to be successful as you move on to the next grade. And so it wasn't about like a make or break scenario, but really around, you know, like an acceleration of learning and providing additional academic supports to students who we knew really needed it.
That sounds fantastic, like learning for learning sake. That's such a great thing. Ms. Smith?
I'm sorry, my question may be related to this, to what you just said, Ms. Savage. Thank you very much for that presentation. I, I wanted to ask a little bit more about the sort of movement from, to skills focus and less content. Could you just describe what that looks like or could look like?
I may ask one of my colleagues to jump in here. Getting a little bit nervous, turning this on my own. And so, so content, we, we had the four content areas, right? And so you had to transition from math to science to social studies to ELA. And, and those are really driven by those grade level standards versus the skills, which would be around looking at the data as the students maybe came out of their grade and creating a program to really drill down and target specific learning needs as opposed to just going through all of the core areas of instruction.
And if you remember, in the, in previous years, we did more of the humanities and the STEM-related classes, which then made it more possible to do the, the skills rather than the, the content. And so we're hoping to get, get back to that and, and really focus on the skills across content areas rather than the, the content that is covered in a traditional ELA, math, science or social studies class.
Okay, just to make sure I'm understanding, so this is in addition to like sort of hands-on, you know?
Project-based learning.
Project-based learning, okay.
Correct.
I think, I just wanted to make sure I had the, that I was understanding what you were saying. Okay, got it. Thank you. Dr. Chatur.
I just wanted to understand the metrics. When it says percentage, what does a 60% academic growth in ELA for sixth grade mean? Like, is it, what number are we starting at where we're going to? Is that number, is it good enough? Does the student move to a higher tier? Or are they still lagging behind, that there's a lot more progress that is needed? Just trying to understand that.
The, I, I just want to make sure I understand your question. You're wondering what that 60% number means?
Right.
So that was, I'm, I'm sorry. The number of, that, I think it was the percentage of students who, who made academic growth, if, if I am not mistaken.
I'm trying to see if, you know, does that, you know, do you take, consider that as you, you know, after the summer school program, the pre and the post, the students actually now are at a better, at a better tier than they were, they started? Or is it that they're still lagging behind that? It sort of goes back to what Ann was asking in terms of assessment of the evaluation. Was that program really successful? The percentage really doesn't give me an idea. That's all.
So what it's representing is that the percentage of students who made growth from the pre-test to the post-test.
But it doesn't tell you how much growth or whether that growth reaches over the necessary achievement line, if you think of it that way, that you're growing in hopes that you would be at a place where you would be at grade level. You can't tell that from that, it's just that you made some growth.
Correct.
Board colleagues, let's see, Ms. Mann, you had a question?
That was, that was my question.
And I, I just want to go back, Anne, to a question that you asked in, in a previous, through the communications tool around, in the past, we, you know, provided information on promotion rates and why it wasn't included this year. And so, you know, I just want to, you know, just on the floor, just, you know, due to COVID and the impact it had on unfinished learning during the 2021 school year, our priority and focus was really on increasing the student engagement for in-person learning. And during, you know, this, the five weeks, teachers prioritized the priority standards and the skills and identified, as identified in the New York State standards. And the goal was really to address that learning loss or unfinished learning through that direct instruction and feedback to students while also recognizing that we could not address the depth of loss of instruction in a short, in a few short weeks. And so, you know, I think it's important to know that as a result of that, our focus really wasn't on that numerical grade as we have done in the, in the past. And so what you're seeing on this slide is the percentage of students that actually saw that growth from that pre-test to the post-test.
And I, and I hear you, and I, I really think that this is what the next four years of public education is going to be about, right? Because these, we, we, in past years, there would have been a small number of students who were not ready to move on to the next grade, and we would have used summer school to help them move on to the next grade. With the substantial impact of COVID, then we have many students who were needing much more support and assistance to get on to the next grade, and it's going to be the case for some number of years that those students are needing that additional support to, to catch up to where they, where they personally would have been. It's not about achieving some artificial bar, it's about what, what's their life, what's their potential and how do we help them get to it? And it'll be very, this is going to be the big challenge for all of our teachers and our teachers aides and all the people in the district to help our kids over the next couple of years. Ms. Smith?
There we go. Thank you. Just a question, so would I be correct in, in my assumption that attendance was not as large an issue here, but transportation was?
So of, of the students who attended, they attended pretty regularly, transportation was a barrier for, for some, especially those who lived in West Hill and Arbor Hill. They had to get on, I, I'm not sure how familiar you are with CDTA, but the 106 loops the city, and it was really the only way for students to get to the building. And so whether they took, you know, the loop going in one direction or the loop going in the other direction, it actually took them about the same amount of time. I want to say it was at least 45 minutes from the time they actually got onto that bus to the time they arrived. And so that's why we're recommending in the future that we would run tripper buses so that students would be able to get picked up at a stop that's in their neighborhood and get transported more easily directly to the school.
Very helpful. I just wanted to make sure I understood what was happening here. Thank you.
Are we ready to move on to high school? I think so. Okay. Thank you again very much for all of your hard work. And you did a great job, Ms. Steckman. Don't be nervous, you did fine. Excellent work.
Thanks, ladies.
You represented your colleagues well. And now?
Okay, well, good evening once again, and it's my pleasure to introduce the fabulous high school academy assistant principals tonight, Alex Lacoste, Nicole Newman, Michael Lopez, and Ken Klein, who spent countless hours planning and implementing summer school, again, from the budget planning and development, the interviewing and hiring, scheduling, and then implementing the day-to-day operations of summer school for nearly 700 students. Without them and support from Principal Comerford, we couldn't offer these opportunities to our students. So I'm very thankful and grateful for the work that they've done. And so now I'm going to turn it over to the team to present the 2021 High School Summer School Program.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Alexandria Lacoste, I'm the Leadership Assistant Principal. So I just want to get overview of our program. So the Albany High School Summer Program is managed by the four academy assistant principals. Our program ran from July 6th through August 11th, Monday through Thursday, from 8:00 until 12:30. We offered both virtual and in-person classes. Our program consisted of students from ninth through 12th grade, including students residing in the city limits of Albany. Our goal of our program is to assist students in achieving grade level requirements by earning back course credit they were not able to earn during the school year. Our program also gave students opportunity to earn, earn additional credits in courses they may have never taken before. We had a total enrollment of 728 students this year. We had a total of 70 staff members, 46 including teachers, six non-instructional staff members and 18 monitors, and we had a spending of $280,785. Next slide, please.
Good evening, Superintendent Adams and the Board of Education. I'm Nicole Newman, the Assistant Academy Principal for the Citizenship Academy here at Albany High School. So we had 728 students attend summer school, as Ms. Lacoste mentioned, which was a 34% increase over last year's population of 542 students. I did look back to the 2019 as well, where we had 848. So we had a reduction in 2020 due to us going into the COVID year and then back into an increase last year. Next slide, please. This is the breakdown of the students that attended summer school according to their cohort. And you'll see that we do have six students, sorry for the typo there, that were in eighth grade that attended our summer school with our new credit courses that we offered this summer. And as well as if you look down to the bottom, you'll see our out-of-cohort students, those are our year five and year six students, who also were able to attend summer school to try to also graduate this August. Next slide, please. So with that being said, we had 1,100, which I'm so happy and pleased to report to Ms. McKenna, course credits earned this past summer, which is a 117% increase over the number of courses that we got last summer, which was 505. And so with a 34% increase in enrollment, we actually got a over 100% increase in the number of courses passed. And that's a kudos to our students and our teachers who did a fantastic job. And I think it goes back to what the middle school presentation mentioned as well, is that our students were already acclimated to the Chromebooks. They already knew the process, they knew Google Classroom, so it was very seamless for them to go right into summer school and get right to work with some of the work that they had to do this summer. So of that 1,100 credits, 612 of that was with our in-person and virtual learning. And then the other was the 488 that we got with our Apex online tutorial program that we use for our students. And I'm happy to report that we had 22 graduates this summer, which again, we only had nine the summer before, so we were up significantly with our number of graduates. So we're happy to be back on track with that as well. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mike Lopez, I'm the Assistant Principal for the Discovery Academy. So I'm going to go over the strengths of the program. One of the things that really helped us out was our special education services pushing in and pulling out of classrooms. We were able to utilize some of the extra space that we had to be able to really reach those students one-on-one. In addition, the familiarity, as just mentioned by Ms. Newman, you know, with the kids with the Google Classroom and teachers working with this, really helped, you know, drive that instruction because we didn't have to troubleshoot so many things, it was already there. And another thing that, you know, was a real strength of the program was the continuity of administrators, summer school staff, you know, that in addition to the staff commitment really helps drive that summer school instruction and climate, whereas, you know, every year it's not like we're billing something new, it's just a continuation of the same staff, the same, you know, instructions, the PD, where instead of creating something new, we're just tweaking things, making things better, adding new things. And everybody has a sense of the operations and the way things go. So it really does help us drive student success. Next slide, please. One of the things we really wanted to focus on was PBIS as well as social emotional learning. So what we wanted to do was really reward student success, reward students from coming to summer school. We had two social workers that really drove our PBIS and AHS SWAG program. We had something called the SWAG cart, where we went around the different classrooms and students that were being successful, that were working hard, we recognized them along with staff. And in addition, teachers nominated students to receive special recognition. In addition, we had attendance awards, and we had things such as today's Falcon Riddle, where students could scan, as well as staff members, the QR code, and there'd be a couple riddles that, you know, if they answered it correctly, we would seek them out, give them prizes for that, and just something to really drive engagement in both students and staff. And lastly, with the social emotional learning piece, what we did was we created also a QR code for students and staff to, to scan it and fill out this brief survey that just really lets us know how they're doing and gives us a way to temperature check the students and the staff and really in a way that is informal. And if a student just wants to let us know, I'm doing good, they don't have to worry about coming into, you know, an office if they're embarrassed or they want to maintain things private, they were able to do this in a way that is much more comfortable for them. And we, it was through this, through the PBIS, that we had about 200 individual student contacts, both with students and calling home and really driving the pride in their achievements. Next slide, please. So for the challenges of the program, again, as mentioned previously with the COVID-19, you know, really hindering things with the shortened timeline for postings, you know, that was a challenge for us. Student attendance in virtual classes, we still had students attending class through virtual, so that engagement, making sure, you know, that they're still coming to class. It's the summertime, everybody wants to be outside, but really honing in on getting those kids to attend and participate. kids to attend and participate. We did have a few technical glitches for school tool, you know, that related to schedules and report cards. But at the same time, you know, we took these challenges, and it's something that, you know, us as a team, we used as growth points and points that we can make sure that we plan for coming for the next summer. And then lastly, you know, we did have two administrators for bulk of the year to plan for June, and fortunately, Mr. Klein and myself were able to come back in July where we could help spearhead the program and help drive student success. So now I'm going to pass it on to Mr. Klein. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Good evening. Yes, let me first say on a personal note that it is good to be back at the high school. And I think that sums up the overall sentiment expressed this past summer by our summer school staff. At the end of the summer, we surveyed our 70 staff members, and most people emphasized that they were happy to be back to in-person instruction. And as Superintendent Adams indicated at the last board meeting, many students faced new challenges as they acclimated back to being in a school building. That said, the staff still expressed a deep appreciation for the opportunity to once again meet face-to-face with our students at Albany High School. Simply stated, the students need us and we need them. Many teachers also shared that they found it more effective to facilitate lessons in person and also teach virtually, but not at the same time. This allowed teachers to better differentiate instruction for every learner, whether it be in a live or virtual platform. Next slide, please. In terms of what students had to say, many shared that they appreciated the second chance to pass one or more courses that they failed. Students reported that teachers were both supportive and helpful. This is no surprise to us as we have an awesome team of teachers. It was good to see so many staff and students in the building again and smiling, even if behind their masks, we could tell their eyes were smiling. Next mask, please. In, did I say next mask, please? That's funny. That's a Freudian slip. We're dealing with handing out masks every day. So next slide, please. In terms of recommendations for next year's summer school program, we would like to identify potential summer school students earlier. This past June was very busy as we needed to repeatedly shift gears due to changing COVID-19 state guidelines and regulations. We hope to improve the process of identifying students through the MTSS process. For example, we'd like to calendar MTSS meetings earlier to allow counselors to meet one-on-one with students so that the students can actively participate in selecting the courses that they need or wish to take. Another recommendation that we would like to highlight is the continuation of offering new courses. The summer school program presents a unique opportunity to offer courses based on student interest, such as digital arts workshop, computer apps, multicultural studies, to name a few. New courses are beneficial for students who wish to enroll in night school and may need a few more credits to graduate on time. In addition, some students who only need to take one or two classes enjoy taking an extra class for personal enrichment. Lastly, new courses are a welcome option for students who work during the school year and prefer a lighter schedule so that they can earn some money during the regular school year. So thank you all for listening, and thank you for your continued support for our high school students and our program. And at this time, I would like to pass the mic to my friend and colleague, Ms. Lacoste, who will speak about the impact of the budget.
So the impact of the budget of our summer school program, this past summer, we did not have regents due to the COVID-19. New York State Department of Education said that we did not need to have August regents this past year. However, it looks like this coming up, the August, we will have to have the regents, and so that will impact our budget, estimating at around $86,913. This year, also, we had really struggled trying to find a ENL teacher. So if we could find an ENL teacher for next year, that will also impact our budget. And we wanted to continue to grow our new classes that offer new credits for our students. And so we're looking at hiring two to three teachers for that program to continue to grow, and that would estimate around $12,240. So that would be the impact of our budget, and that's it for our presentation. And if you have any questions at this moment, we'd be glad to answer any.
Thank you all as well. I think summer school is helping our most presenters per minute. I think we get the highest volume of presenters, which is actually lovely for us because we don't get to see many of you very often, and we appreciate hearing your voices and getting to see you in person because we do appreciate your work each and every day, even though we don't see you and you don't see us. We are thinking about you and knowing what important work you're doing. Does anybody have a specific question related to the Albany High Summer School program? I, Board Member Mann.
It was more of a comment. I'm just looking at the slide that talks about program metrics, and there were a lot of course credits that were earned. And that's after a period of time when students were not coming into a building. And I just really think that, and we had 22 summer graduates, and I think that's something that really should be applauded. Thank you.
Anyone else something for high school? I have one comment. I wanted to thank you for your positive reflection on the new first-time credit offerings that we did this summer, which is pretty unusual for us. We've done just a dabbling in that before, so it was wait to see. And I'm glad to have your feedback that you felt that that was successful, because I know we were all really looking forward to seeing how that could do the kinds of things that you mentioned, Mr. Klein, about making it summer school really a powerful tool for our students who want a different track through high school, that that could be really wonderful. And then I checked my notes, and of course, I read all of your presentations before when you were going to present a couple of board meetings ago, and we changed things. And I made a note that there seemed like there was an unusually high number of IEP students in summer school this year compared to past years, but I can't now find the data as I reflect back on my notes. And I'm wondering if that rings true to you, if you had any commentary on the number of IEP students and why that would be really different this year.
I'll take the question. I think it just speaks to the challenges of a virtual program. It's very challenging for any of our students, but particularly students who struggle for different reasons, you know, who have an IEP. And, you know, implementing an IEP through a virtual platform is definitely more challenging, and I witnessed it personally, as my wife is a teacher, and not in the district, but works with students with IEPs. And it's just a challenge to make those one-on-one connections via a screen. So I think that was particularly helpful to offer the summer school program and have those students come in person where they can connect with the teachers in a very real one-on-one setting.
I understand, and that is actually very helpful for me to sort of personalize the experience, really the numbers. Dr. Titor found my data point on Slide 3. Thank you very much. If anybody wants to look, you'll see that there were 109 IEP students versus 54 last year and 91 the year before, so it's pretty different. Anyone else with questions about Albany High Summer School? If not, then we will look forward to seeing you guys again a year from now, if not before, on some other topic. So have a good night. Thanks so much for being with us tonight.
Thank you so very much.
Bye-bye. We did do things slightly out of order this evening compared to the way we normally do it. We normally have policy right after routine consent. Tonight, we decided to do summer school in advance because we do often have a cast of thousands, and we wanted those folks to be able to get on with their lives for the evening. Dr. Titor is with us all night anyway, so he gets to go next.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. You know, we haven't had a policy committee, you know, we've been postponing the policy committee meeting, but we finally had it. I bring to you four policies for discussion. First one is 5695, students in personal electronic devices. This policy was revised based on the NISBA policy template. And the Code of Conduct, Computer Network, and Internet Acceptable Use Policies, as well as the Computer Network Acceptable Use Agreements, are now specifically referred to in the policy. And I think most of you should have gotten an email today saying that you need to update your, some of these agreements by now, but 29 today. 9270 is the next policy, that's primary appointments. This policy is slightly modified to remove the gender-specific terms. This is something we've been doing all along with our policies as they come up on the cycle of review. 5100 is student attendance. This policy requires the board to review the annual attendance data, and since this data has embargoed, it was reviewed in an executive session, there are no significant changes to the policy, except that the section on attendance incentives is modified to reflect that excused absences such as illnesses and religious holidays would not negatively impact attendance incentives. We definitely don't want kids to feel that they have to come to school sick just to get their 100% attendance. We don't want to create that behavior. 5460 is child abuse in a domestic setting, and this policy was revised based on the NISBA recommendations. The new sample policies modified to meet the requirements of Resolution Number 19, which was passed by the Voting Delegates at the 2020 NISBA Annual Business Meeting, leading to ongoing training. A section on Child Protective Services Interventions will also move from the Code of Conduct into this policy. Under the education law, boards of education must develop and maintain written policies on child abuse reporting and establish training programs on district procedures for reporting of child abuse cases. This policy, the accompanying administrative regulation, reflect the requirements of Education Law 49I and the Commission's Regulations 102NN regarding posting the number for the central register and how to access the website of the New York State Office of Children and Family Services. Any questions?
I just wanted to thank you for drawing attention to the change in 5100, which I think is a really important one in this era of COVID, that if our buildings want to have incentives and awards for attendance, it's important that they not consider a student who is sick to not be eligible for that attendance award, because that is a reason that they should stay home from school and keep their germs at home and not at school. Board Member Pajeev.
I just wanted to echo what Board Member Savage said and say it's also going to help with students that are missing class due to religious observances, you know, attending funerals, other legitimate reasons, and especially, but especially the sickness thing. We really don't want kids not telling their parents they don't feel well because they want to get in that drawing for the bicycle. That's a recipe for disaster. It's going to be a much, much better system just to encourage kids to come to school, you know, if you're well, come to school.
Thanks. All right. Ready to move off of policy? As usual, we will vote on those policies to adopt them two weeks from tonight. And that brings us to our next discussion item. Welcome, Mr. Petron and Ms. West. We're happy to see you here.
Good evening, and thank you so very much, Madam President and members of the board. As you know, we each have our division presentations, and tonight, we are so very pleased to have Mr. Petron, our Human Resources Administrator, and Ms. Andrea West, who is our Assistant Human Resources Administrator tonight for the presentation. So thank you very much for your district update.
All right. Good evening, President Savage, Board Member, Superintendent, and my cabinet colleagues. I'm very excited to be here, working in human resources. This pandemic has been very difficult for me. I don't get to see people. So I enjoy coming out tonight and hanging out with all of you and being in person to give this presentation update. As the Superintendent said, I'm joined this evening by my Assistant HR Administrator, Ms. West, my right arm with everything that we do. So as you see on the board, on the presentation tonight, we start with our guiding principles from the district. So this includes our vision, mission, and goals, which drives all the work that we do at the district, which cascades down to each of the divisions. With that, we have our own guiding principles as a division. These things drive the business that we do and support the organization. So we have a focus on recruiting, hiring, and retaining the most qualified staff, promoting positive labor relations, ensuring a safe and professional work environment, and providing employment-related resources to all staff so they can be as successful as possible in their duties. These things guide the work that we do, and as usual, I do like to talk a little bit about the metrics, about some of the things that we have done over the past year. This information is through the end of June 30. A whole lot has happened over the last couple of months as well, but this is just recapping the work that we did last year. So we had 272 job postings last year. In addition to that, we did 180 recall opportunities, where we asked our staff that we laid off to come back to opportunities we had available. You know, we do communicate with our staff in various modes, some phone calls, some emails. Those are some average phone calls and emails that we get through the various routes that come in through our office for us to address. Couple other salient points I wanted to bring to your attention this year. Last year, we processed 378 family medical leave and leave of absence requests. Obviously, that was a difficult year for staff, so we wanted to make sure we were able to support them as they needed to, you know, manage the pandemic. In addition to that, we reviewed, and I think we talked about this a little bit last year because our presentation was in November of last year, we reviewed 268 reasonable accommodation requests. This took us through an interactive process with each of our staff members to determine what they needed to be successful, how we could accommodate the workplace and still allow them to, you know, support our students. In addition to that, we had 87 new hires. Obviously, that's down this year compared to three other years due to the reductions in staff that we made. And I just, I take a quick moment here just to acknowledge my staff, because again, I am, you know, the cleanup crew that comes through behind them. They're doing all the heavy lifting. I'm just there to make sure that they are feeling good at the work that they do. We're a mighty team of seven. We have some recruiters, some employee relations people, as well as a few admin assistants on the team. So I can't do this work without them. They're there for me. The next couple of slides are, again, talking about the HR metrics, because we need to keep an eye on the things that are important to us. In this case, we want to keep an eye on the demographics of our workforce. We want to make sure that we are doing everything we can to reflect our student body and support students and provide people that look like them. As our profession is predominantly dominated by female staff, that remains consistent with our graphics here. So we have about 71% of the staff identifying as female. Next slide. More important is our race breakdown. So, you know, we did see a bit of a drop this year comparatively, and I think a lot of that was due to the reductions in force in the support staff ranks. As we know, a lot of our population of color in our organization are the support staff. So with the reductions in force that we had to make, that did impact our staffing demographics or our ethnicity breakdown. And next slide. Also, talking about some of the position stats that we have. So again, we've shored these up over the last few years, so we have some, three years of consistent data, and again, we're going to have rolling three years as we present this information, kind of show some trends. I think the couple of call-out points here are, you know, the separations. So we had 187 separations this past year, and that is due to the layoffs again. We saw fewer retirements, I think, because, you know, I think there was some uncertainty in the world. Not as many staff members were willing to make the leap. They just weren't sure where they were going. And then hiring was also down because we were trying to be conservative as we were moving through the year to not hire too many staff, and we just did a bunch of layoffs. So moving on to our priorities for 2020 and 2021. These are the things we had hoped to work on over the past year. We really found that a lot of our time was keeping lights on. So we did not make as much progress as I would have liked on these activities, but we did make some efforts to move these things along. So some of the things we're looking at are targeted recruiting efforts to increase diversity, the critical shortage areas, building our partnerships for a student-to-teacher pipeline, refining our HR metrics, continuing our professional development opportunities for administrators and support staff, increasing our HR communications, reviewing employee wellness opportunities, and continuing process improvement practices. The couple of things I would call out that we were able to make success on were our PD opportunities. I won't steal Ms. West's thunder on that a little bit later, so we'll talk about some of the things that we were able to do. In addition to that was our HR communications. We've made some enhancements over the last year so that we can more directly interact with staff, and staff have a little bit more of a, okay, I have this question, I can go to this person or go to this place and get that answer. So we did that. And finally, some wellness activities. With that being said, well, if you didn't take care of those priorities, what things did you do? So the next couple of slides will talk about some of the things that So, the next couple of slides will talk about some of the things that kept us busy and kept our attention focused. I mentioned it a couple of times, we had to make the difficult decision to make some layoffs. We supported the organization through two-hundred-and-twenty-two FTE production. Not all of that was staff, there were vacancies that we were able to hold back on, but we, we needed to do our part to support the organization, whether it was working with the administrators on how to communicate with their staff and help them through those difficult conversations, or working directly with staff once they were notified that we were going to be separating ways with them, talking about their benefits, talking about their salary, where they needed to go, where they, where they could get support on those things. In addition to that, there was a lot of behind the scenes that, that my team worked on, as well as the assistant superintendents, in terms of the who, what, where. So, for those of you that are familiar with state education and civil service law, there are requirements and expectations on how layoffs happen. There's a lot of moving pieces to that, and a lot of that is prescribed by law, so we needed to go through that process to make sure we followed that correctly. Then, once we made that decision to lay people off, shortly after that, a few quarters later, we then went through the process to rehire many of that staff. So, we identified one-hundred-and-eighty opportunities that we, we thought were most beneficial to the organization, identified those positions, and started to recall those individuals and have them come back. So, by the end of the school year, we still had about seventy-eight vacancies left out of those one-hundred-and-eighty positions. So, that, that kind of put us at a little bit of a deficit heading into our hiring season. So, we already had some open vacancies. Then we get into hiring season during July and August, which also compounds where we are today in terms of our lack of staff, but we're doing everything we can think of to address our vacancies. And next slide, please. A, another task that kept us busy over the latter half of the school year was transitioning to a business, a new business and HR system. So, we, we have fully implemented Windcap, well, implemented it to the fact that it's operational, but there's still a lot more work on the HR side of the house, because really the benefit, the payroll side of the house goes first, because we need to process paychecks. The other stuff that the HR does is, is less front-facing, so we, we get there eventually. So, we moved eleven-thousand-eight-hundred-seventy-five personnel records over a hundred, one-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-one of those were active staff. We had to extract and find ways to get all this information out of our previous system, scrub it, clean it, modify it, put in its templates, and load it up into a new system. Then, once we've done that, we learn how to maneuver the system. Well, if that was fine, learning how to maneuver it, we had a couple of big milestones coming. So, yes, for the business office, did the, the Herculean lift on payroll, but there are some pieces that HR participates with. So, we had to, although we are implementing a system right up to July one, we needed to get ready because we need to support them with a twelve-month payroll, so all of our twelve-month employees received their first paycheck. We've supported the business office, partnered with them to make sure all of that was accurate. More important for us, leading into September, we have the health insurance and deductions contribution. So, those got turned on for all employees, we needed to make sure that those were accurate. And then finally, health insurance buyback, another big thing that we needed to be part of to make sure the business happens normally for our employees. Now, we're really in the auditing phase and really understanding how the system fully works, trying to get the most utility out of it. And just kind of a side note to this, so I think if we are tying conversations together through our audit committee, we identified that there could be some additional checks and balances between the business office and the HR office. We have taken those steps to take some activities from the business office, from the benefit side of the world, bring them upstairs to HR. So, those are things that we have added, we are still working through those. So, we implemented the new system, we have our general policies and procedures on those, we're now fine-tuning those, adding in the additional checks and balances to make sure that we are attacking those items that were on the audit to make sure we are law in compliance. And those were my items, and I will turn it over to Ms. West to take the next couple.
Thank you, Mr. Petron. And I would just like to add onto that, that in the middle of doing all of the conversions, in the middle of implementing a new system, we lost fifty percent of our staff. So, we were able to function and do what we had to do in order to keep the lights on. In the middle of all that, we did professional development, we do district-wide professional development, we partner with curriculum and instruction to make sure that the support staff has professional development that they are really interested in. We partner with the union president as well. They really survey their members to give ideas on what they would like to see, and we help implement that. We also do administrator professional development, starting with August with our New Administrators' Week, to acclimate new administrators to the district and policies and procedures. And then we also do that on a monthly basis to keep them aware of date-sensitive deadlines and different procedures that need to happen with their staff or trainings that they need to do with their staff. We also do substitute training, and we do that two times a year. So, we do that in September, August or September, and then we do it again after the, the holiday break in January, so that we catch all of the substitutes. They take it every year, whether or not they've been trained on it before, as a refresher course. We do have our Honeywell come in and do some training with them as well. What we are looking to also do is have our security team come in and do a little bit more of an in-depth training. They do basic training, but we want them to come in and do a little bit more, especially for our instructional substitutes. We also do administrative training and training for our typists. We did have a, a lot of new administrative assistants start with the district. So, one of the things that we do is we go in and we show them who we are. We can't actually go to the buildings now, but that was what we did before. Now, we do it virtually, so they know who we are, they are familiar with the forms and the documents that we use in HR, board documents, anything that they would need in order to perform their job appropriately. And then it gets them familiar with our staff and to know who to come to and, and how to get any questions answered and be supportive to the buildings as needed. We also did some wellness training, as Mr. Petron alluded to earlier. We partner with PPS to do wellness trainings every two weeks, and that was really for employees. It was a, a hour-long session that really allowed employees to, to tend to their social emotional well-being and address any issues that they may be having internally. It would give them an outlet to, to speak to those issues and, and get coping skills. We also, as a department, we sent out monthly, send out monthly email communications, and it gives resources on where people and employees can get assistance for their social emotional well-being, and if they have any concerns or just avenues of where they can turn to, especially for those employees that may not have attended the wellness sessions, they now have it via email and a way to follow up. We also dedicated an email directly to connect with employees. As I said before, we were down fifty percent staff. One of the things that came out of that that was very, very positive, we dedicated an email directly to benefits. So, any employee in a district, they can send an email to the benefits email, ask their questions, it's manned by two employees, and it's, it provides a way for them to get a quicker response. So, that was one of the, our highlights. And we also had successful launch of the e-benefits portal. So, last year, we told you that we were about to implement it, and this, we implemented it in May for open enrollment. It was phenomenal, and it made everything a lot more streamlined for employees to be able to get that, that real-time assistance with their benefits. They could go in, look at it, see what they needed to see and what they wanted to select, and it just made everything go a lot smoother for them. And then, if they had a question, they could tag back to the benefits email and ask their questions. Next slide. Recruitment. So, we attended virtual job fairs, and we also have plans to visit HBCUs in the spring. We are exploring the possibility of holding an in-person job fair, and we are also researching additional virtual job fairs for the districts. What we are doing right now, we're holding walk-in interviews, so they happen every day. We are focusing on substitutes, and if anyone wants to come in, they can come in, they'll be interviewed, there's a team of five of us that are able to do the interviews, and we are stepping that up and believing that we will have some success. Right now, we've already conducted one-hundred-and-twenty-two interviews, we've definitely been focusing on typists, teaching assistants, hall monitors, maintenance staff, and we have targeted recruiting for lunch aids and substitutes. Ms. Petron.
So, now we just kind of get back to our priorities for twenty-one, twenty-two. I have some of the same priorities that we had from last year, I'd really like to dig into these, and we weren't able to make the progress I was hoping to from last year. So, looking at these things as the, the driving force for us over the next twelve months, we're going to continue our targeted recruiting, continue our building our relationships for a student-to-teacher pipeline. With that, we've actually made some tweaks to the NYU program, and I'll talk about that in the coming, coming year. We're refining the HR metrics, our progress monitoring tools, so we have our metrics internally. Now, we need to make sure we share those with the organization, make sure that our administrators understand how this data is impacting the work they do. We have some wellness initiatives, we need to do more with that. We're going to be partnering with the, the labor associations to talk about what their members need, ways that we can, you know, support our staff. And then we're also looking at different benefit options. Need to increase our HR communication. So, we've talked about sporadic things that we've done, our wellness communications, our monthly email communications, we need to be consistent with those things to make sure that we're doing those and kind of repeating the things that we say we're going to do. And continue with our process, continuing our process improvement practices. So, as mentioned with the staff turnover in our team, this gave us a great opportunity to test our policies and procedures and see how well they work. We have some opportunities, so we are going to work on those and use the year to really practice the things that we learned and really get the team back up to that place that we had prior to, that we had built over the last few years. And if I may have a little liberty, instead of questions, I would like to go to the next slide and, and just kind of do a statement. We're hiring. I'd like to recommend that if anyone is looking for an employment opportunity, please visit the albanyschools.com website. We have many opportunities available. We are looking currently for teaching assistants, substitute teachers, and substitute operations and maintenance, as well as full-time operations and maintenance staff. So, please visit the website or give us a call. Thank you so much for your time.
And thank you very much for the presentation and the ad at the end. Very good. Friends, do anybody have a particular question they want to start with? We know I should not take, I should not skip the moment to say, we feel for you. This has been an incredibly difficult year and a half, particularly with the laws of term, of staff in your own department, just to, like, salt in the wound, right? Like, it was hard enough at full staff. So, we appreciate you and the other members of your staff for all that you have done to, to see us through to this point. So, thank you for your hard work.
Well, I just do want to say, though, it's a partnership, so I, you know, I've been seeing through some of the presentations that the administrators are doing things to strengthen their buildings. The, my cabinet colleagues, we are all partners in this, we are all going to work towards the same goal. It is difficult, we will get there, but we wouldn't be, have been able to do it without our, our colleagues. So, yes, sorry.
Ms. Petron. Mr. Petron, I just wanted to thank you for that fantastic presentation. I really liked both the substantive data that you presented there, and that was a beautiful, beautiful PowerPoint, especially, I liked the photos of people throughout, which really put the emphasis on the human and human resources, and it really speaks, it speaks to your department's ability to, to create great communications, which is fantastic. And I just urge, I urge you, as you, as you encourage wellness initiatives, to put, working on those thirty-nine percent of our employees that have not yet indicated that they're vaccinated, to, to use all your communications and presentation skills to encourage them to do that. Thanks very much. Board member, Ellen Yowey.
Thank you, Mr. Petron. As always, very nice presentation, outlined everything very well. I do have a question about the substitute training twice per year. Is this something that we require our substitutes to take before they start working for us?
Yes, yep.
Okay, so, I'm just wondering, does the limited availability, having it only twice per year, does that create some challenges getting new substitutes onboard?
Yes, so, fair point. As we start a new school year, it is a, you have to attend the training before you can start working. We will not be holding people six months before you can start working. We do an informal training with them in person, which is the traditional way that it has been done. So, during the onboarding process, we would have a conversation with substitutes, we have a substitute handbook that we review with them, some of the expectations. This is an enhancement to that, and we're starting slow with twice a year. You know, we're, we're thinking that quarterly or even monthly would be much better, because then we would be able to really spend more quality time with our new substitutes, so they are fully prepared for the job when they.
Do you mind if I have a follow-up question? Because I want to, I have, it's on my list as well. So, am I understanding correctly that the substitute manual is sort of the, like, here's what you got to do, these are the steps, things, but these currently, every few months, twice a year thing, is like enhanced skills, other things that you would benefit from in order to serve our students better?
Yes.
I'm so excited. That is so great. As you know, I have spoken often about how I feel that our substitutes are an underutilized resource, knowing that our staff calls out roughly one in ten days. You know, we have covered by a substitute, that means ten percent of our instruction is being done by substitutes. I feel that we are, every time we make a substitute a better educator, we have, we have done better for our students, because I know we're already doing wonderful PD for our full-time professional staff. I don't mean to suggest it's one or the other, but I know that the subs needed a lot more, and I appreciate that you're working towards that. Did that answer your, answer your question, Paulie? Anyone else with a question for the HR department? Dr. Stewart?
No, I just had a comment. That last slide, I expected you in the Uncle Sam costume saying we want you.
Right, right. We'll, we'll do what we need to do. Lawn signs, lady people, whatever.
So, I have a real question, but I also have like this brainstorm idea, which is probably silly, and you guys are professionals and you've probably thought this through, but one of the things I know, have noticed for many years is lawn signs to drive walk-in interviews. You know, all of the big hospitals do CNAs or whatever come in right now. So, I was wondering if you have taken your walk-in interviews on the road? Like, I could imagine you could look at which zip codes generate the most hall monitors and TAs, and then go to the library in that zip code and put up some, you know, lawn signs that say, "Walk-in, Walk-In Interviews This Week for District Positions" or something. This is my sort of harebrained idea.
So, what we, what we actually do is, when we do our signs, we distribute them not at, not only at the library, but at the supermarket, at barber shops, at beauty salons, at churches. So, we're really trying, it's just getting the people into, to the door.
And that was, that was the more serious question I had for you. I just want to understand better, is the, the shortage of staff, is it a shortage of applicant, applicants, or is it a shortage of our ability to process applicants through the process because of our own reduced HR staff, or is it some other way of explaining it for me to understand?
I, I think it's, it's truly the labor market right now, that's where we are today. The, the recent postings that have gone out have really not yielded quality candidates or any candidates, and we're not talking as many hard-to-fill anymore. Some of the regular positions that we normally would fly, get fifty applicants are really, you know, dwindling down, and, and that's actually where we're finding the walk-in interviews for substitutes is actually helpful, because our, our substitute candidate pools have been rather shallow. We just not have, have not been getting the business on that. You know, we have tried making sure that we are, we have reinforced that we are on the web indeed, in local community centers and locations, so that we are, the word is out there. It's just a very interesting labor market.
And if I could even add to that, for our positions that are civil service positions, there's mandatory lists out there. So, even when civil service schools and campuses that list, we're still not getting the normal feedback that we would.
And just going back to my walk-in interviews harebrained idea, are you actually doing the walk-in interviews only at Academy Park, or are they sometimes located in other places?
They're only at Academy Park right now, but you did just give me something that I was kind of noodling around. I, I had the idea of lawn signs, and I had the idea of putting lawn signs on school buildings, and I was like, huh, what could we benefit from that? I have some interesting thoughts with, with your ideas.
All right, well, I look forward to seeing you implement wonderful things with my harebrained idea. I just know that Academy Park is not the easiest building to get to, it's not really convenient. So, if we could, if we can offer people another convenient way, maybe it's do it here, do it in, do it at Sheraton Prep, do it in the buildings. I mean, we've got buildings all over the district, it's one thing we have that not every employer has, is the ability to do that interview right there. Then I, my other question, I'm sorry, I don't want to monopolize anybody else. Anybody else have a question before I do mine? I wanted to ask you a question about metrics. You talked about having metrics and getting ready to kind of more, share them more. And I wondered if you do metrics on how effective the wellness work that you've done has been? Do you track how many people attended? Do you track how many people open the email? Do you track how many people actually participate in those things? Because we know our teachers and our staff have had a very difficult year, because we've all had a very difficult year. And we know you've been offering those services, but what I don't know, and maybe you do, is whether those services are being accessed even when they're operated.
Yeah. We do have some metrics on that. So we get, just going, I always go back to the Employee Assistance Program because it is a completely underutilized benefit. We get a quarterly report on that, on utilization of that. It is pretty low. We did take attendance, in air quotes, for our wellness sessions to kind of gauge what people were interested in, what sort of traffic we got with those. That was also pretty low. So I think another year of events, another year of tracking with data to see what kind of results we can get from that before we start sharing those.
I understand, and that doesn't surprise me. It's hard to do wellness at your workplace. And that's, there's a vulnerability there that you may not be interested in sharing with your colleagues. That was, that was my experience as an employee. So anyone else for human resources? We look forward to seeing you fill all those vacant slots. We know that you're working hard, and we know that you know how important your work is to the success of every student. I know the superintendent says this so often, but what you're doing is education. It's critical to the success of the enterprise, and we appreciate you. So thank you. Thank you. All right.
Thank you so much, Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Petron. And Ms. West, thank you so very much for all that you do for our HR division, but also for our district of the public. So thank you.
That brings us to the end of the discussion agenda. It is time for board committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? Board Member Petron.
Yes, while we're on the subject of wellness, I'd like to report that the District Wellness Committee is planning to meet on Thursday, December 9.
Yes, I'd like to just say that the Facilities Committee will be meeting on December 7, virtually. And, but I do want to also encourage my colleagues. If you'd like to take a tour of the Albany High School or any of the other facilities that we're working on, let me know. And as some of you already know, that every time you go past the high school, it's something different. There's a new change. I was there this afternoon, and it was, there was no front. So interesting, you know, to just see all these changes. And so let me know. But otherwise, we'll see you on December 7, my colleagues on the committee. Thank you.
Any other committee reports? Anything, any other business, anything for the good of the order? Then I know you guys want to hear, oh, Board Member Petron.
I'd like to suggest that we go back into executive session to discuss a personnel model.
That is excellent. I'm going to read the formal motion, because what we need to do is, I'm going to suggest your motion be to discuss the employment history of a particular individual with regards to their continued employment and or potential discipline. Does that sound like a good motion to you?
That's totally what I meant. Thank you.
I know, that's what you meant. Thank you. Board Member Petron has moved. Do we have a second? Dr. Totor, all in favor? That is unanimous. I mentioned to everyone in the room and listening at home that we do not ever plan to come back into public session except for the purposes of adjourning the meeting. So there will be no more public discussion. The board's going into exec and will not return to public session. Thank you so much. We will see you in two weeks.